Ladies and gentlemen, we welcome you as we start our public hearings scheduled for tonight. Ms. Administrator, would you lead us through this charge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number 23 provides an annual update to the five-year schedule of capital improvements pursuant to Florida statutes and requests the Board to conduct the first and only public hearing to adopt the ordinance updating Tallahassee Leon County Comprehensive Capital Improvement Schedule. Again, Commissioners, this will look familiar to you. We bring this to you at this time in the process. Each year, we have no speakers on this item. Happy to answer any questions you have. We're recommending option one.
We have a motion and a second for option one. End of discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. It passes unanimously. Twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this item requests the Board conduct the first and only public hearing, seeking conditional Board approval of the Camellia Oaks Phase Three Type C Site Development Application for Residential Development on 33.1 acres of land located off Mahan Drive. The project site is located in the Residential Preservation or RP zoning districts which allows for the proposed single-family detached residential development as a permissible use and requires review and approval by the Board. With that, Commissioners, before we go any further on this item, as a quasi-judicial hearing, I'd like to hand it over to the county attorney for some statements.
County Attorney.
Thank you, Chairman. Since this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, you are obligated to disclose any ex parte communications you've had with any parties about this matter on the record if they have not already been previously disclosed. So just want to give any of the Commissioners who need to do that an opportunity. Thank you very much.
Okay, so, Ms. Administrator.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. With that, just going to say that, again, we're happy to answer questions. We are recommending option one, and we have no speakers on the side.
Now, what's the number of residential units? Sixty-seven?
Yes, I believe you've got that right, Mr. Chairman. I'm looking at...
One hundred and nineteen units of single-family detached residential condominiums with twenty-six accessory structures.
One hundred and nineteen, single?
Yeah, let me get... If you've... Let me get...
I'm looking at phase one and two. One, two, three, four.
Yes, certainly. Let me get Scott Rockmeyer to come on up, or Ryan Colpepper or Berry on this item that can speak to some of the specifics.
Good evening, Commissioner Scott Rockmeyer, DSEM. The total number of units proposed before you tonight is one hundred and nineteen units, and that's Phase Three. Phase One is complete. Phase Two is under construction, near-complete, and this is the last and final phase.
Is all of that contained under the thirty-three acres on the parcel?
That's correct. That's Phase Three.
Okay. All right. We thank you. Commissioners, we have a motion. We have a motion, second. Hearing, no other comments. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. It passes unanimously. Twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will defer to the county attorney on item number twenty-five.
County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This public hearing was duly published in the Tallahassee Democrat on February 25th. It proposes to remove 26.40 acres from the CDD. That consists of only the boundaries of Falls Chase Parkway and Acadian Boulevard, as well as two stormwater retention ponds that serve the Falls Chase Commercial Subdivision. The two ponds that will continue to be maintained by the Falls Chase Commercial Subdivision, and the two roads are already maintained by Leon County pursuant to Section 190.046, subsection 1B. A public hearing for the petition has to be approved by this body. Staff recommends that the Board conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt the ordinance proposed as Attachment One, amending Leon County Ordinance Number 97-18 as amended to contract the boundaries of the existing Falls Chase Community Development District. In determining whether to approve or deny the petition, the Board is to consider the record before it, as well as the six factors outlined on pages 873 and 874 of the Agenda Materials. Happy to answer any questions of the Board.
What is the motivating factor for constricting the size of this Falls Chase?
I can't speak to the motivation. I can only speak to the impacts to the CDD. There has to be a determination that the land, as reduced remains of sufficient size, is sufficiently compact and is sufficiently contiguous to be developable or continue to be as one functional and unrelated community. And that post-contraction area of the district will be 375.53 acres, with remaining land consistent with the residential portions of the district. And in our view, is sufficient size, is sufficiently compact, and is sufficiently contiguous to continue to be developable as one functional and unrelated community.
How many units are scheduled for this 400 acres? How many units?
For the 375.53 acres? I don't have that information. That's not part of the petition.
Okay. Commissioners, you've heard a description offered by the county attorney. As you all might know, this was hard fought, right for developable land, and you seldom, no? We never see any developer reducing a development by twenty-six acres. So you wonder what's occurring. And as hard fought as the rights to develop all of this land was, to say that they're yielding, giving up the ghost on twenty-six acres is pretty unimaginable.
Mr. Chairman, again, I'll just point out, the only things being contracted from the boundaries are two roadways that have already been dedicated, and they're maintained by Leon County, so that's not really a change to the district. Also, the two stormwater ponds that would be removed are not serving that community and are serving the Falls Chase Commercial Subdivision, so they have no impact on the residential, and they do not serve the residential areas of that community.
Commissioners, I hear no. I want to just give a shout-out to my cousin, Attorney Charles Gardner. Go ahead, Cuz. Wave your hand in there. All right. Good to see you. I see your name marked in these, in the resolution, and if my cousin is doing it, I know it's all tied and right. So, thank you, Ms. Gardner. We appreciate you. All right. We got a motion on the floor. We have a second. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. We thank you. We're back to general business.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It does put us back on general business. Item number eighteen, Commissioner seeks the Board's consideration to allocate startup funding for the Tallahassee Leon County Council on the Status of Men and Boys. As you may recall, Commissioners, from your last meeting, the sheriff has proposed an initial startup cost of $350,000 for the council.
Commissioners, because he's been here and has Bible study, we only have one speaker on nineteen, we got a load of speakers on eighteen. Would you suffer, allow for the chairman to allow nineteen to precede eighteen because it's going to be long, so that Reverend Hall can share his comments on broadband?
Chairman, I think the motion for a general conversation to move item nineteen at the beginning of general business?
We have a second. All in favor, please say aye. Reverend Hall, if you would, I know you're trying to get out to your members, if you come and name and address for the record here. You might as well for church, for Bible study.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate you yielding and allowing me to stand before you all this afternoon.
Yes, sir. If you give us your name and address.
My name is David Hall. Reverend David Hall. I live at 12700 Mikkasuki Road, Tallahassee, Florida, 32309. I'm in the northeast part of Leon County. With me tonight, I have Reverend Gwen Carol Simmons, and I have Gracie Leland. Reverend Carol, pastor of church called Corn Court on Veterans Memorial Drive, and she been having issues also with broadband, trying to go on Zoom. So it's complicated, trying to get Zoom on Wi-Fi out there because it's not working. I had a personal thing that happened since the last time I've been here. It got personal. My relatives became ill, and EMS was on their way trying to get him, to take him to TMH in the Amalans, and they lost signals coming down Mikkasuki Road. Because Mikkasuki Road, those who have not traveled, got a lot of trees, and you got a lot of dead spots when you come down the Wi-Fi in that road. So they... It created a lot of conflict there because he could have died before he even got in the Amalans. So it's getting, it's at the point now, something really needs to be happening. You can't just go around and gambling with people's lives. It's bad. So I would suggest, whatever you all are going to take up tonight, I hope we are moving in the right direction because this area really needs some help. And I'm not just speaking just to be speaking. I'm speaking from the heart. And those who have not visited Mikkasuki, I challenge Commissioner Cumming to come out and look at the area and visit with the people and let the people know who represent them, not just on election time, but come out and just talk, and they'll be happy to see you all. And Commissioner Bryan, I would like for all of you all, but especially the ones that are representing us in the Mikkasuki community. We don't stop at Beverly, Wayland Hills. It crossed the Capitol Circle. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Hall. That was our only speaker for that item, in particular because of his pending church duties. I myself am an AME preacher, as is Reverend Hall, and we've been restricted church services to telephonic and virtual services. So his inability to have services out in that community impacts the quality, as well as the quantity of airtime and service continuity. So from that angle, Sunday is very, very important, and very, very important. Are we going to take up, introduce the item? Because we want to make sure...
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. We'll do. Again, Commissioners, as you recall, the Board requested the status report on this item, on our efforts to develop a comprehensive local broadband plan for Tallahassee Leon County that will enable the community to take advantage of federal, state, and other grant opportunities that we're anticipating. Christina Perettis with OEV is prepared to provide a brief presentation to you on our local planning efforts as they relate to these opportunities and to answer any questions that you might have. Again, that was our only speaker on this item, and on the conclusion of Christina's presentation, we're recommending option one.
Ms. Perettis, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Vince, and thank you, Commissioners. I'm pleased to provide you with a status report on the efforts of broadband in our community, including the rural areas in state and federal legislation. As you know, broadband is a critical part of our local infrastructure, and it has become critical as well to economic opportunity, education, healthcare, and civic engagement. Issues surrounding broadband come down to two main issues: access and affordability. Leon County does not serve as that utility provider, and all of our work must be done in coordination with the private sector. According to a study by Broadband Now, Florida has the fifth-best broadband access in the country, and Leon County is one out of thirty-three counties with over 95% coverage. And I just want to compare that to Alachua County, which is between 75 and 95%, and the city itself, within the city limits, has approximately 99% coverage. Even though with our strong broadband coverage standards, there is some disparity between urban and rural areas. The good news is that recent data shows there's been significant improvements to access over the last year, which can be attributed to the expansion of services by existing providers and new providers moving into our community. It's important to note that 99% of rural residents in Leon County have access to three or more providers, and that's up from 87%, which was reported to you in 2021. In regards to opportunity for increased access, the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund was launched in 2020 and invested $20.4 billion in the construction of rural broadband. Phase One of this program, $2.4 million was awarded to expand broadband and 233 census blocks is right here in Leon County over a six-year period. There are two providers that have been selected, and that's Rural Electric Cooperative Consortium and SpaceX Starlink Program. These two programs will allow for an increase in access to our rural communities. The first report on the implementation of this program is due on March 1st, 2023, and so staff, along with your federal lobbying team, are engaged in seeking updates on this report. In addition, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, signed by President Biden, includes $65 billion to support new and existing grant programs designed to address limited broadband coverage. $42.5 for the new bead program and $1 million for the middle-mile broadband. Both of these grant programs will be launched in the middle of 2022, and one of them is tied to the state's plan that they are currently working on. The state needs to submit a five-year implementation plan to be able to leverage the $42.5 billion. And I'm going to talk to you about your local planning efforts in a second, which will feed into that state program. So throughout Leon County, when you look about affordability, we continue to promote low-cost access through internet. There are over 10 million people enrolled in the federal government's Affordable Connectivity Program. That was an emergency program that was enacted during COVID. Now it's been made permanent, and there's about $14.2 billion for that program, and that'll continue until funding runs out for that. Also, your local providers assist with costs. Comcast is a great example, through Comcast Rise, Internet Essentials, and Lift Zones. And then through your Leon County Library, you have the ability to access public internet, mobile hotspots that you can check out. And Leon County was also awarded an FCC Connectivity Fund grant to support the purchases of 100 additional mobile hotspots, about 189 Chromebooks, and 100 Kindles for checkout. So to further gather information on broadband access and affordability, the state authorized the county administrators and managers to form the local technology planning committees. These assist with the Department of Economic Opportunity and the development of that five-year plan. So your Office of Economic Vitality serves as a designated staff for this committee. We held our first planning meeting in December and worked very closely with DEO for this, too. And this effort is to help us position our community to leverage those funds that come down from the feds to the state, and then ultimately working with the providers on those issues. The committee has recently launched a community-wide survey for residents and businesses to test your broadband speed, and that directly feeds the state's program or plan that they're working on. And other counties across the state are also joining in this effort. We're also meeting with private sector providers in our community to continue the conversation and analyze the opportunities for the expansion of existing infrastructure. And again, that'll become part of Florida's Greater Five-Year Broadband Action Plan. Our local report is due to the state on April 30th. That document is intended to be dynamic and updated as progress is made in the development of planned projects in the community. Again, since Leon County does not serve as a utility provider, it's important that we do all these efforts in conjunction with the private sector. And they've been wonderful partners, presenting at each one of our local technology planning committees, and have been meeting individually with us as well, as some of that stuff gets a little bit more proprietary. So our planning efforts are proactive engagement in the development of the plan, and will well-position us to compete for funding allocations underneath federal legislation. Moving forward, we're going to continue to facilitate the local technology planning teams. In addition, your legislative team will continue to monitor the development of state and federal legislation regarding broadband and bring a report back to you as part of the 2022 Florida Legislative Final Report. And with that, Commissioners, staff is recommending that you accept the status report.
Commissioners, are there any comments? Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Christina. I just want to thank staff and the county administrator for such a thorough report. Clearly, you guys are doing everything you possibly can, I mean, really above and beyond. But obviously, for Mr. Hall and the folks in Mikkasuki, until we have 100% reliable coverage, it's not enough. And I know it's complicated, and I just want to make in the record, you know, say in the record that we really are doing everything we can. We have a unique situation. We're not a utility provider. But I feel like this, the technology planning committee, or the technology planning team and the report that's due in April, will really position us in a good posture to really take advantage of these federal dollars, and then we can deploy those out to you folks in Mikkasuki and get you into a position that you deserve to be in. So just know that it's a huge priority of ours. I made it a strategic initiative at the county. The county commission feels the same way about it. It fits into our strategic plan, and we got the best OEV director in the country, I think, working on it. So just take what little comfort you can in that and hope, and just, we will, hope is not a strategy, right? But we are extremely hopeful that this will allow us to leverage more opportunity for our rural unincorporated areas. So thank you, Christina. Thank you, staff, for putting this together, and I'm looking forward to actually seeing this stuff deployed.
Commissioner Cummings, I see your hand.
I thank you, Ms. Perettis, for that, for that report. And of course, I read your report and thank staff for putting it together. But I believe you indicated that we are partnering with two entities in that regard. Do we have any timetable? And I recognize we are putting things in place so that we can be beneficiaries of the federal money we anticipate coming down. But right now, with the two, with the partnerships that we have, are we just in anticipatory stage until the federal money comes down? Or is there anything, any relief that can be done for, you know, the Mikkasuki, the Mikkasuki area?
Yes, Commissioner, when you look at the, in December 2020, so $2.4 million was awarded to those two companies through a federal program, which helps them provide increased broadband services to 233 census tracts in that area. We're currently working with the federal lobbying team to get more information, but the first report back on the implementation of that program isn't due until March 1st, 2023. And during the legislative conference up in DC, we actually met with them to see if we could get additional information, and again, that won't be ready until 2023.
Can I just follow up, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
So Reverend Hall in the Mikkasuki area pretty much can't expect any relief until a year from now, because this is March 2022 for the most part?
We'll continue to do what we can to support our private sector partners and solutions for the rural areas.
Right, and that's what I was asking about, the private sector partners. They are taking some initiative?
Yes, ma'am, they are. Yes. You've seen increased coverage in those areas with your eight current providers.
Okay.
Unfortunately, it sounds as if they just have not yet reached Mr. Hall at this point in time.
Do you know whether or not the Mikkasuki area has been suggested to them as a target, as a target area?
I'll certainly reach out to our area providers and work directly with Mr. Hall on that response.
Oh, okay. So you will follow up with them. And Reverend Hall, I just want to mention that I do live out of 90 East, in between Mikkasuki and Highway 90. Fortunately, in my neighborhood, you know, we do have, we do have the Wi-Fi service and what have you, but I certainly have sentiments with you, and I feel like staff will follow up to do what they can as soon as they can. So we appreciate you being here.
Vice Chairman Dean, Commissioner Dozier.
I do think staff is doing a terrific job of trying to tackle this issue, but I will say for Reverend Hall that this has been a long issue for him. I remember four years ago, him having the same issue. Eight years ago, him having the same issue. And to say that they just haven't gotten to that part of town, or to that, to Mikkasuki area, unacceptable. I want them to get there based off of the fact that these people have been asking for this service for way too long. And it's affecting not only the way they go about doing business during the day, but obviously, from what Reverend Hall has said, it's affecting the life and safety of those who live in the area. And so what I don't want is for Reverend Hall and his family and the members out there in Mikkasuki to have to call myself Commissioner Cummings or Commissioner Welch again and say that they have the same problem, and our response is, well, they just haven't gotten to that area, when they've been asking for us to address it for a long time. And this is in no way directed towards your staff, because I know you guys are doing the best that you can, but those service providers, it's bordering on me having to say some things or think in some ways that I don't like to think, in places I don't like to go, and reason to why they haven't responded to the area, but they may have responded to other areas, if you know what I mean. So hopefully, sooner than later, this gets resolved. If there's anybody out there who knows these service providers, I would ask that you let them know about the conversation that we're having here, because I don't have much patience, and I'm a pretty patient dude, but I don't have much patience to hear that this issue hasn't been addressed in that area, given the fact of they have been working with me or let me know about this issue for far too long. Thank you for, again, thank you for staff for your work on it. I think it's time for the service providers to step up and do their part. Thank you, Mr. Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the 25 women you absolutely must know in this community. Congratulations, Christina.
Thank you.
And I'm glad you're here on International Women's Day. I know you probably heard Kelly Adi's presentation earlier, so just wanted to say congratulations while you're at the podium, and job well done on this and many, many other things.
Thank you.
And going off of what the vice chair just said, this is a challenge. You have been tasked with coming up with a report based on the state standards, so my comments are not necessarily about what the work you're doing. You're meeting those goals, you're talking with folks. I have talked to a couple of the providers recently who have been in those meetings, and they, and the one-on-one meetings and the group meetings, they were really happy they got both opportunities. So I think you're handling this really well, and it's what we need to do to meet the state standards and get to that funding and to more opportunities. So I want to separate that from, as you said, Mr. Vice Chair, the painful struggle that we're going through with broadband. So just in the, in the report you gave us, I'm not sure how many times most of us read the, talk about DSL dial-up anymore, right? So if I'm reading this correctly, everything from DSL dial-up through to fiber is considered access to broadband under this report, right? Okay. So I think that is really important for us to know, because the 99, I think I captured that number right, but you said 99% coverage. Is that right?
Leon County has 95%, and in your rural communities, you have 99% of your rural residents have access to three or more providers.
Okay. So having access to a provider, that may not give you access to a Zoom meeting. That may not give you access to the GIS systems that are so critical, things like that. So that is a big distinction. So when we see this information coming back, and as we work with the state over the next couple of years, and hopefully our federal government as well, and through our lobbyists, having usable broadband for the technology that we have right now, for work, for school, for other things, I think we need to start unpacking that a little bit, because just saying that we've got access, and you're nodding, I appreciate, so this is something that I'm guessing is coming up in your conversations, right? So that is one big thing. We can't stop when we hit, you know, everyone has access to a company because not all companies are providing the same service. The second part, and this is why I was on the phone with one of, a couple of the providers, but one particularly, it's my understanding, and we taught, we had a big item in the last year, year and a half or so. I learned so much about how the state and the feds, and we all did, right? How they look at this. And if I remember correctly, and I know you have some of it in here, but it's, they're either census tracts, or they get a little smaller, right? We're not down to the house-by-house measurement. So I had one constituent, I'll say in the tram, chairs capitole... So I had one constituent, I'll say in the tram, Chairs Capitole area, one end of history had access and the other end didn't. So when we look at the map from the state or the feds, they're going to say, that neighborhood's got access. Box checked. And in fact, the other side of the neighborhood did have broadband, fiber, everything else. But the company will not extend it to the other side of the neighborhood. So the gaps, I mean, and this is just on us, that we need to keep thinking about that as we work with our private sector partners, because they are leaving gaps, both in the technology, but also in access within that neighborhood that's not going to be captured in this current assessment. So I just wanted to draw those two things out as we're talking about this. The only question I've got, so that's my, now I'm coming back to your committee and everything else. So the surveys that you've got, we had copies of those for the business and the residential. And forgive me if it's been a long meeting already. How are you continuing to push those out, or is that done? How are we working on that? Yeah?
The press release went out today to encourage everybody. We're sharing it. We shared it with our planning committee. The school board has pushed it out on their end, and we will continue to do a hard press through March 23rd. You can access it at the libraries as well. We're encouraging folks to do that, through that effort. And we'll use that to help form our SWOT analysis and drive the rest of our assessment into the state.
Okay. Thank you for that, and you'll forgive me for not reading the press release in the few minutes before the meeting. So we are going into a fabulous season in Tallahassee. There's going to be a lot of people out, and thank goodness, we can finally get out and see each other again. Ms. County Administrator, I would say engaging every nonprofit, every arts agency, every partner we've got to do this person-to-person, that's going to be our data, right? That we, that will help us in this report and may get down to that neighborhood level of the tech they have or the actual access they have. Would that, okay. So I don't know if you need that to be part of the motion. You're already doing a lot, but if we can step that up, if you haven't already engaged, I'm thinking the nonprofits and their clients. I'm thinking the arts agencies, you know, well, it's 23rd, so we may not have some of the events before the 23rd, and we do have a spring break in there. This is going to be challenging. But anything we can do would be most appreciated. We got to get as much return on that as possible. And again, Christina, thank you. Saw TJ's name mentioned, your team, really appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We thank you, here and all the commissioners. Ms. Reddys, congratulations on being one of those, you know, I was trying to know you before you, you know, one of the top 25 people you needed to know. I knew, I knew a longer time ago, you needed to know, Ms. Reddys. And as the, as the, one of our leaders of the Office of Economic Vitality, and the wonderful work that you all did with the CARES Act money, indeed, you are someone that everyone should want to know. I recognize that Reverend Hall is going to get preferential treatment, because Micasuki and his areas in the great northeast. But could y'all please remember Woodville as well? And I guess Commissioner Jackson would want for Lake Taquon, Highway 20 area to be. So I would, I would say that if we could think of those areas and put the full court press. Previous meeting, when we talked about this, I had suggested maybe us designating the Vice Chair to bird-dog the broadband issue and to, to take leadership, represent us, our board. But I think that your report tonight is lean and it's mean. And I've heard the Vice Chair ask that you put a full court press to relieve the Micasuki area, Reverend Hall, that we would make them a priority, because they've been asking for a period of eight years. And then do remember us in Woodville and Commissioner Jackson, Highway 20. We're thankful, we thank you for the report. Commissioner Maddox, I desire for you to champion it, but it seems like one of the 25 people we need to know is on top of it. All right. Thank you, Commissioners. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
I pose the same sign. It passes unanimously.
Point of order, did someone make a motion and a second for that? Thank you.
Oh, we didn't? Oh, good, good, good. We got a motion by Commissioner Welch and a second by Commissioner Dozier. And the district commissioner's made that for you, Reverend Hall. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, good, good. Good work, district commissioner. All right. Our next item, going back to number 18.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this item seeks your consideration of funding to support the council on the status of men and boys. Again, Commissioners, real straightforward one, because it's a continuation of your previous direction at the last meeting. You'll recall at that time, the sheriff proposed initial startup costs for the council at $350,000, which would be shared equally among the county and the city and Leon County schools. And you asked that this item be brought back to provide you a status of that, and also to contemplate the, the budget action here at the county. Accordingly, the item recommends the approval of a budget amendment allocating $70,000 from general fund contingency and another 70 from the law enforcement trust fund to the sheriff's general operating budget. That's the amount that was requested by the board. Similarly, the city commission took action recently and reserved $140,000, the same amount, reflecting the city's share for the initial startups of the council. I believe the school board is expected to consider its participation at its meeting later this evening. With that, Commissioners, we're recommending the options before you. We have a few speakers on this item and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Vice Chairman, is there something you want to say, sir?
Hey, it is like with the speakers.
Want to wait for the speakers? Okay. These are speakers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first speaker is Kaylen Norris Barber.
Mr. Barber, please state your name and address for the record.
Kaylen Norris Barber, 527 West Bivard Street. Initially, I was excited about the CSMB, but upon reading this agenda item and reviewing the composition of the Leadership Council, I became a skeptic. While I am still open-minded, it appears that, I have the impression rather, that this is shaping up to be just very superficial and political. The structure of the council is just, in my opinion, way extremely bureaucratic. So I would encourage you to take a look at that. In addition to that, when you, when we hire the executive director, I'd encourage and pray that you make that process competitive. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barber. Our next speaker. The next speaker is, I'm sorry, Whitfield Leland III.
I think he's departed.
Whitfield Leland III?
He's departed.
Okay.
He shared his comments with.
Someone who's not gone is Stanley Sims.
Boom shakalaka, boom. Mr. Sims, come on up and state your name.
My name is Shinkton. I'm sorry. My name is Stanley Sims. My wife and my good old dog Prince allows me to be at 1320 Avondale Way. First, I'd like to say to my MVP player, Ms. Chastity, you serve this community well. I sit through your explanation of dirty water, and I felt like I understood everything you said. I'm just glad you're not going to get a test. Ms. Commissioner Dozier, congratulations on your event. Very blessed I was able to be there to witness it. As you guys know, me and Kelly are in a tight race to be the president of the Sheriff Walt McNeil Fan Club. This thing is neck and neck. She's got a slight edge with her big program today. It was a great success, so I've got to tighten up on my campaign.
You got to.
Yes, I do. First, I want to say I support this 3,000%, and I do have an issue of concern that Mr. Leland has brought to my attention. I don't know if Ms. Audi know or not, but several years ago, her and I shared on a statewide committee to reduce sexual violence in the state of Florida. And I was appointed to that board along with Mr. Ed Seaver and all. So I'm very familiar with this setup. And I do share their concern, because there is not an ex-felon on that executive committee. I think a representation of an ex-felon should be on that, that committee, that we are sitting there at the table in the decision-making, in the strategic plan of that. But I don't, I, I, not to the point where we feel that we are not at a point, we, this is a stopping point to put the brakes on. No, I think that our community is demanding on us not to put the brakes, but to push the gas, but move in a very methodical way. The Sheriff Walt McNeil, who is my cousin, I tell everybody, especially when I got blue lights flashing behind me, I make sure everyone knows that we're relatives. We're not, but sometimes my medication tends to be, say things that are slightly skewed. But what I want to know is that, what I'm trying to expound here is, one thing that this community has demonstrated is that we trust him. We trust him. We have access to him, and this is something that we want. And so he has helped orchestrate with me. I'm meeting with the FSU professors on March 30th with a Zoom meeting, talking about how we can gavenize and move this forward. So I'm asking this commission that you will consider the concerns, but not slow the train down, but make an addendum that a person of an ex-felon who has cleared all of his records, not on probation, is able, whatever standards you edit, they do. I'm good, I'm gone, I don't want to go.
Boom shakalaka, boom.
Vote Stanley Sims.
All right.
Ms. Final speaker, I'm sorry. Final speaker on this item, Kelly Adi.
I'm going to weigh my time. I'll speak on Agenda Item 22.
All right. Ms. Adi is well ahead in that. Thank you very much, I'm the final speaker. So you want to weigh in, Mr. Vice Chair?
Thank you. Look, I love the item, but I have the same issue that Mr. Barber has, as well as Mr. Sims, in the composition of the board. And I pulled Mr. Cave aside, had a conversation with him. Sheriff Cave aside, had a conversation with him.
Was that Sunshine, the Jones?
Well, technically, he's not elected official, so, but I just told all y'all what I did. So I'm okay with moving forward with, with option one and two in the commitments there. With the commitment from the sheriff's office that we'll have a look at, because he said that this is conceptual and it's a work in progress, which, which is good. But, and I like the names on there, I just would like for constituents, some constituents to be added. And so as we move forward, can we have this come back? Since it's conceptual now, can we have it come back with a look at the composition of the board, including some, some constituent, some constituent members? And you can specify them as you, as you would like, and then we have a conversation around it. I mean, you're already at 20. Do you want to add five more? Do you want to change, you know, some of those 20? I mean, you're getting to be, you're getting to have a pretty large board. But I would imagine that the people, the people who are slated in those, in those 20, I would imagine they'd be responsible enough to come to the meetings to make sure you have a quorum. But, but at the same time, I, if we had to approve the item with the concept and the money today, based solely off of what I've seen, I could not support it because of the composition of the board. And so what I, what I am willing to do, is I'm willing to make a motion for options one and two, and, and with the, with the understanding that the concept is specific to the construction of the council, come back to us for a review. And ask that citizens be included in that, in that construction of the council, of concept of the council. That'll be my motion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Minor, you want to weigh in?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I'll support the motion on the floor. I'll support option one and two. But I, I do have two, I've got two very important recommendations, and I think I might introduce one or both as a friendly amendment to your motion, Commissioner Maddox. Number one, I'd like to suggest that we include representation on Leadership Council, along the same vein to what you're talking about, Commissioner Maddox. But I'd like to include representation from organizations like the Commission on Status of Women and Girls, or Oasis, or Refuge House, in the Leadership Council, and also in the Family Support Subcommittee. Now, this may seem counterintuitive, right? Why would we want organizations that focus on women on a, on an initiative that focuses on men and boys? Well, I know that sounds counterintuitive, but it actually makes a lot of sense. Many of our at-risk boys are living with single mothers, are being raised by single mothers, and/or those mothers are being subjected to physical abuse that have a tremendous impact on those boys and young men. So I can't recommend this strongly enough, is to have that type of representation. A lot of the at-risk boys that are in this community are being raised by single mothers. And those single mothers are being, their needs are being studied and cared for and addressed by organizations like the Oasis Center and the CSWG and the Refuge House. So I, so one thing I'd like to do is add a friendly amendment to Commissioner Maddox, if you wouldn't mind, so that we would also, when that comes back to us at the county commission, it also includes organizations such as those.
No, I think you make an excellent point. I've had conversations around that, so I'll include it as amendment. Again, with the understanding of, after while, you're going to have 75 people.
Exactly.
On your council. So, so in concept, y'all figure it out, but I do think that's, that's a good addition.
Yeah, understood, Commissioner Maddox. I know it's getting to a point where it might be unwieldy if we just simply added on, but we'll leave that to you to, to figure out for the proposal. The other thing, and I can't stress this strongly enough, since the CSMB, the Council for Status of Men and Boys was proposed, there's been some confusion throughout the community about how it compares to the Commission on Status of Women and Girls. The council for the status of men and boys provides direct support to men and boys to reduce homicides primarily and reduce violent crime. Direct support. The Commission on Status of Women and Girls develops policy recommendations that improve the status of women and girls in this county. So one provides direct support, one is providing policy recommendations. Those are very different goals, very different missions, scopes, and, and structures. Now, you could argue that the CSWG, the Commission on Status of Women and Girls, should be restructured to be more active in terms of taking those policy recommendations and putting those into implementation. I've had conversations with members of the CSWG just about that, but that's, that's for another day. But I strongly recommend that we, that we change the name of the CSMB substantively, so that people don't mistakenly compare it to the CSWG, the Commission on Status of Women and Girls. Now, why is this important? It's just a name, right? I mean, how could it, it envy a challenge to change at this point? I think it's very important. It's very, very important. I am certain, and mark my words on this, I am certain that if the names still stay similar, we will, for the next few years, be explaining how these two organizations are different, how they have different missions. One is focused on reducing homicides and, and addressing the needs of at-risk men and boys, specifically to reduce homicides and violent crime. The other one is, is developing policy recommendations. We will be explaining that for years if we don't change the name in a substantive way, so that people don't just consciously make that link. I do think that's important. I know it sounds like semantics, it's just a name, but I do think that, that, that words matter. And so I'd recommend that we, if you wouldn't mind, you know, at the sheriff's office, take a hard look about what type of name you can change this to, so that it still is meaningful, but yet doesn't automatically bring people to link the two organizations together. So those are my two recommendations. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. Sheriff Cave, did you, you received what he was suggesting? And one of the things that I see here on what we have before, has in red draft, and anytime I see red, I, first I think Jesus is talking, but it has draft and red, so this is not a final, final that we're, we're acceding to tonight. But I understand the point you're making. I went to Harvard University, and sometimes people went to Harvard University and Howard Harvard, and we wanted Harvard University to change their name, because if people get confused with Howard University sometime.
I'll point to that, that was not a part of the motion, but simply a recommendation coming from, because I don't want to make that as a part. If you guys decide to do it, you decide to do it, but the piece, the composition piece is a part. Thank you for the clarification. I just want to make that clear.
Mr. Chairman, yes, that's correct, Commissioner Maddox. Thank you very much.
That's what it's saying. You know, and you can put this even plainer. Some people's mama is they daddy. So that's about as plain as I can make it. So Ms. Adi is absolutely right. So Ms. Oddie is absolutely right, in the sense of an integration of the panel, because so many young people, I imagine that the sheriff was looking at, their mothers were their fathers too. So you got to have that involvement. Commissioner Dozier, then Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well? Commissioner Minor, it sounds like we've had similar conversations, and I've said this before, I really appreciate it when you bring up, or anyone brings up, issues that are specific to.
Ms. Sims?
Women and girls.
Boom shakalaka.
It's all good. Chair's got his way. Quiet the room, right there. So thank you for bringing that up. It is, it is significant point to include, and I think, I mean, this breaks on a lot of different ways, whether we're talking about actual homicides, and how, what the events that led to those, but I think the point, and you were making this a moment ago, Mr. Chair, all of this affects women and girls. There are the mothers, the sisters, the bystanders, community members, aunts, it just, it does impact all of us. So I think there is absolutely a need to look to those organizations and include them. I think today we're mostly focused on the funding, and I'm really glad, I should step back a second, and that, you know, partners are stepping up, and we're looking at the funding, and we're moving this forward. Because this is in draft form right now, and Chief of Staff, I go back, Chief of Staff, Assistant Sheriff, I'm glad you're here, sir. I'm wondering if, moving forward, once this is refined, if we could have the final drafts come back to us of how you're going to structure this. You've got a lot of community feedback now, I know you've had some at the city, I'm sure school board might have some as well. So once we take all of this into consideration, whether it be the name, other organizations, where they fit, if it's in some of the partner groups, or the leadership, bring back the final draft, and we'll just, instead of making it the changes here on the dais, but really wanting to see what those changes are, instead of just kind of generally talking about it. And I see you, sir, nodding a good bit, thank you for that. Mr. County Administrator, is that acceptable?
Absolutely. It probably, we'll see what all is included in the motion, but of course, we'll bring the final draft back for the board for approval.
To the maker of the motion, thank you, sir. If you don't mind adding that direction, to bring the final version of this back to us, once things get settled, and the sheriff, your team can really look at this and look at this structure with all the feedback you get. I don't want to get ahead, I believe the school board's taken it up tonight, is that correct? So I don't want to get ahead of other comments that may be coming in from other boards and other partners as well. So I concur with needing to include other groups. One thought about the leadership, counsel and I did talk to Whitfield before I left, we've all talked, or I heard your comments, Kenny Stanley, thank you very much. My reading of this, when I look at the leadership group, yes, it doesn't have people directly, you know, from the community on that leadership group, I think that is significant. On the other hand, it has some of the decision makers, and with this structure, and this is unique, you know, distinct from Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, there's so many, there's so much information being fed up to that leadership group, that it was my sense that that group would be making decisions and bringing them back to respective boards that could take action. This is one thing we've struggled with in the past. We have one community group after another, setting a neighborhood, we get a report, but no one with decision making is sitting in that group, and sometimes there's a disconnect between what that citizens group is thinking and what we actually make the decision. So I just say that because I think you're making really good points, and it's really critical to have, I mean, absolutely, people from the community involved in those leadership discussions, absolutely. But I also want to make sure this isn't just something that, we're talking about something, and it goes into one more report. Sheriff said that repeatedly, right? I'm talking about it for decades, time to do something. So how we balance that is critical. I think there's a way to do it, I hope there's a way to do it, but you've heard the good comments, and we need to make sure the people who are living and walking this life and dealing with this every day have a seat at the table. So with that, I will support the motion, and thank you for the amendment. Last comment, Commissioner Minor, your comments about Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, I'm going to save a comment on that for our next item on discretionary funding levels, I think that's where we should talk about that, but thank you for bringing that up as well, appreciate it.
I will accept the amendment, and I did have a quick question on point. And I was going to say my comments for the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls for that item too. I was going to say my comments on the CS, yeah, WC, WG, on, I was going to say that for the discretionary item, but the question I have is, is there going to be a general agreement amongst the funding partners once it comes back? Because we asked for that final thing, I was like, well, shouldn't we all kind of agree on it? Or is it one of those things, when we get the final, is the final? Is that, will we all have to agree, or is this going to be like, this is the final, this is what we doing?
We would anticipate bringing you back a final with agreement among all the parties.
Great, okay, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Welch and Commissioner Cumming.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you guys recall, the last time we talked about this, I was concerned about confusion in terms of executive director positions, I'm concerned with the thing being too unwieldy, hard to manage, and I think these conversations are kind of reflecting that, right? I mean, that is a legitimate concern. I think everybody gives the sheriff and Ron the benefit of the doubt in the need for the thing. I agree with Commissioner Minor's suggestion, as a product of a single mother, I think it's vital that we have that perspective on this council. I do think that we should have some say in who sits on the steering committee or the leadership council, whether that be citizen appointments or someone amongst ourselves. I think that my suggestion would be to work with Vince and the staff, who are very good at these types of organizations, to make sure that they're manageable and can pivot and be productive, because at the end of the day, we got to be productive, we have to move the needle on this issue. If we're just going to put together some entity that doesn't actually get us anywhere, then we're going to make a lot of people angry and look ineffective. And I just think you got to be real careful with this sort of nebulous idea for how this thing is structured at this level of funding, you might end up spinning your wheels and looking ineffective. And so I would just reiterate my comments, I don't think Mr. Barber's idea is a terrible idea in terms of, it's still not clear to me who points the executive director, I think the sheriff thinks he does. So I think it's probably not a bad idea to look at that, but my understanding is this motion is going to move the funding, and then when it comes back to us, we will have some opportunity to have some input into the structure. I can support that 100%, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner Cumming.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I support the motion that's on the floor, Mr. Chair, and I just think that it's healthy that we're having this discussion tonight. I think people have different opinions, but I think what we've got to do is get this initiative off the ground. If you look at the overall proposal, it recommends for representatives from five different entities to select the executive director. It recommends what, 20 people on the steering committee or on the board, and I agree with some of the suggestions that perhaps there should be a representative, a boys' representative on the board, perhaps a mothers' representative, and clearly, nonprofits should be involved. But my point is, Mr. Chair, we're not going to resolve all these issues at one time. We're not going to resolve all the issues tonight, but I think it's significant that we all want the same thing. We want this to succeed, we want to get it off the ground. And so the first step tonight is the funding, I believe that's really what the agenda's about, I believe, Mr. County Administrator, we've got some background, but what we as the commission tonight are doing is voting on the funding, and I think everything else, you know, is a methodical thing. We have to do it step by step, and I believe we will address all the issues that have come before us tonight, and I believe in the final analysis, we will all be satisfied to the point that we are clearly moving the needle toward helping our young men and boys in this community. So I don't want us to get bogged down on all of the issues tonight, I want us to move forward, and then step by step, we'll address all the other issues that you all have raised, which are really good issues, and I think we'll plug all of those into the process. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Mr. Vice Chairman?
My final comment on this, Mr. Chair.
This is your final?
Final, 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 yeah, just like a good Baptist tree, you know, I'm Baptist, is I'm wondering if we can also, go ahead, Mr. Administrator, I want to make sure this is part of discussion, because I mentioned this last time, I don't think any organization's going to take one year of funding, especially of this nature, and going to jump off and magically not need us anymore, or not need any help. So what I would like to ask, and Mr. Administrator, you tell me if this is already contemplated to happen, is a budget discussion item for the next budget around funding for this, in around about the same amount for this issue, is that already contemplated, or do I need to add it to the motion, Mr. Administrator?
It is already contemplated that we'll be bringing you back a budget discussion item for next year.
Great, just want to be sure of that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sheriff Cave, I wanted to point out that there's not hate, there's only love, and we want to see, this is a great team, I've counted at least 12 to 20 people I cannot reach by phone. I'm sure that in terms of their capacity to meet, it's going to be hard to get a quorum of these outstanding leaders of our community. They're very distinguished in their own right, a quorum might be hard. But what is being asked is for community members, as well as gender representation. Sims has suggested that people who may have some background modifications such as ex-felon could be helpful, they've experienced a few things, I believe it was a commercial, said I know a few things because I've seen a few things, and the things that they've seen could be helpful to guide what other people are contemplating. So I think that's a rich suggestion coming from our citizens tonight. Also, this is not acceptable to our board, that the city of Tyler has his mayor listed, and our board has no representation, we don't accept that. Our county administrator is there. Huh?
City manager. It's not the mayor, it's the city manager.
If you look up on number four.
No, that's, are you looking at an attachment? Yeah, this has been updated since the last time you saw it, Commissioner, it's in the agenda item under the analysis, and that's what's being recommended, those 1 through 20 on page two. And that was a change, you're absolutely right, that was a change from the last time that occurred at the city commission meeting.
Okay, I'm going to make sure I lay eyes on. Y'all got that? Attachment two?
It's also right in the main item, under the first, under the analysis section.
To give clarity to the issue, I think there was a discussion at the city commission meeting during the item, and during that discussion, the mayor made clear that he wanted the city manager to sit instead of the mayor. So in the presentation piece, the staff came up, the analysis, it says city manager, but the attachment item, which is the draft, still says mayor.
Okay, it says city mayor.
Yeah, but.
Okay, okay, cool, cool, cool. So that's been modified, okay, great. That's been modified, Sheriff Cave. It's been modified, that's good, and it was a good catch, and I think that also, not added, the Department of Criminal Justice from FSU is going to be a partner, and they're not listed, and I guess Florida State's president could, come on up. You've heard us, would you like to react to a number of things that have been shared by this commission?
Well, thank you, commissioners, and thank you for your continued support of this. We had to come up with a conceptual document, a conceptual vision from the sheriff on what he wanted to accomplish. When we got the results, at 81% of these homicides that's occurring in our community are men and boys. So what are we going to do about it? And this is what this vision and conceptual document was. We couldn't come to the funding entities and saying, hey, we want to commit, or, you know, create a council or a commission, without coming up with some form of draft. We absolutely agree that many changes are going to be made, and many more from what we've talked about, both with you all, the city, the school board, and several of the citizens here tonight, we've talked to. What we've intentionally tried doing is stop making changes to the document and taking the feedback, so that when we assemble the group together, we can form all these changes and come together with a final product that's going to work for all of us. So that's absolutely the intent, that's the plan. I know county administrator is going to be on the leadership council, and I'm sure he's going to represent you all, and we hear you, we hear all the citizens, and we're certainly here to make this council work, which I certainly believe it's going to.
Very good. Y'all have any questions for Sheriff Cave? Okay. Thank you, Sheriff Cave, we're appreciative.
Assistant Sheriff, sir. I got to watch my boss.
That word. All right. Commissioners, are there any other, I want to make sure, that someone on this south end said that this was going to come back. This motion does not indicate anything about it returning to us at all. General Counsel, have I missed something? We're simply, in these motions of one and two, we're giving the sheriff $7,000, but there is nothing that stipulates that it has to come back to us before it's adopted these final membership rigs.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I thought it was contemplated in the motion.
It was a modification to the options listed in the agenda item.
Say it again.
It's a modification to the options listed in the agenda item, which is to approve options one and two, but with the composition of the council to come back for more consideration with an eye toward constituent members in the friendly amendment by Commissioner Minor to address representative other organizations, with the friendly amendment by Commissioner Dozier, to bring back the final version to the board with the contract of the parties.
You take exquisite notes. Let me ask, does this assume that we have veto authority to bring it back? Do we have the ability to purge that list?
As the county administrator. That was one of the questions that was asked as well, the county administrator explained that, but I have to be agreement amongst the funders on the structure before it moves forward, so there would be agreement by all of us.
So in other words, Mr. Administrator, we're going to hold our check up, we don't relinquish a check until we've checked off and checked the block that we like, what we see on this membership council. Okay, very good. All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Propose the same sign, it passes unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, we're doing very good tonight, we're moving quickly, and we're going to move expeditiously through our final three items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this next item was requested by the board, item 20, it provides an overview of the regulatory framework and opportunities to expand the community's charging infrastructure for electronic vehicles. In addition, this item seeks the board approval to schedule the first and only public hearing to consider the proposed electric vehicle ready ordinance. Again, commissioners, the intent of this ordinance is to facilitate the use of electronic vehicles to further the establishment of convenient, cost-effective electric vehicle infrastructure that will also accommodate future technological advancements. Commissioners, the adoption of the EV-ready ordinance will also better prepare Leon County to compete for grant funding that we made available under the Federal Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. With that, we're happy to answer any questions you might have, and we're recommending options one and two.
Options one and two is a motion seconded by Commissioner Welch. This commissioner went to the pump on Saturday, and I was thinking very feverishly about a electric car, how about that? I've never thought about it more strongly than on Saturday. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I don't know who got that second, it wasn't me, I was asking to speak.
It was a.
Vice Chair, Vice Chair had the motion? I'll take, I'll do the second, I just wanted to say.
Y'all have a ventriloquist on that end.
No worries, no worries. I just had a quick question to staff, I think that's a. I think that's a great item. I think it's obviously a move in the right direction as the country continues to move in the direction of electric vehicles. And certainly we see the pain at the pump right now. So my friends, who all have Teslas, aren't hurting as much as me in a Ford F-150. My question, Mr. County Administrator, is, is there any capacity or do we have the ability now that when, I know like if we permit new parking structures or multifamily stuff, is there any capacity in our ordinances to require retrofit or per se, like if somebody wants to modify an existing structure, like FSU wants to come in and do something to one of their parking garages, would this then retro, is it like a new level of code where they would have to now facilitate electric vehicle infrastructure further than what they currently are?
I want to ask Barry to answer that.
Yeah, Commissioner, yes, there, I believe, and I'm looking over to Ryan here, there is an element in there about redevelopment beyond a certain point. So yeah, retrofitting is sometimes difficult to accomplish. Catching it at the front end is the least expensive way for them to include that infrastructure while they're out there doing it. But also major retrofits and redevelopment would be subject to the same guides.
Right, so, Mr. Chair, if I may, so like if somebody wants to come and redo a parking lot, say in one of the shopping centers and wherever, do we have anything in here that says, okay, now that you were doing the parking lot, we want you to put up, you know, some charging stations like we've got over at Village Square or something like that?
Yeah, we will have a threshold for redevelopment that would encourage them to install that infrastructure at that time, yes.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to just mention that little caveat that I think that this is a great item and anything we can do to, you know, encourage new construction of electric vehicle infrastructure, but also the retrofitting of electric vehicle infrastructure. I know at the county, we're moving, trying to get our fleet to be sustainable and all that stuff. So, great item, thank you, Mr. Chair, it's all ahead.
Very good. Ms. Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll be very quick. You know, when the administrator and I were talking about this agenda item during our briefing, you know, we talked about how these thresholds here position Leon County as being among a group of leaders on this. But the thing that we can hope for is that in just a matter of three or four years, these thresholds might be too low, where we might come back in three or four years and take a look at upping these thresholds because the market has been such that the pervasiveness of EVs is much greater than it is now. So, very excited to vote for this enthusiastically, voting for it, and then hopefully in three or four years we'll come back and address it again. Thank you very much.
Super. Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just quickly, Ms. County Administrator, I'm glad you all noted conversations with the city about setting up a framework there. We've talked about this in a lot of our different subjects this year. More streamlined that framework, the better. So, thank you for that and I assume you'll let us know if anything develops on that end. Thank you, that's it.
Very good. Commissioner Cummings, are you trending toward an electric car?
Okay. I have no comment. Mr. Chair, other than to commend staff and the county administrator for the foresight to put us in a position for what's coming more prevalent in the future. And I think we'll be very well positioned when the electric vehicles become, you know, a lot more vast here in this area. So I think this clearly sets us up to receive that federal funding and everything that goes with it so that we'll be top notch right here in Leon County. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We're going to be top notch here in Leon County, that's for sure. Okay, do we have a motion in place? Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Propose the same sign, it carries unanimously. We thank you, our next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this item, item number 21, seeks the board's authorization to enter into a sponsorship agreement in the amount of $50,000 to support TCC's inaugural Rock the Roost concert in July on the intermural fields on TCC's campus. This concert is a fundraiser for TCC, will feature Luke Bryan. Commissioners, there are a couple of things to note about the item in the funding request. This event would have been eligible for our tourist grant funding, but TCC approached the county after our tourist grant cycle had been completed. As a result, supporting this funding request will require the utilization of tourism fund balance, which is available should the board wish to do this, but it does require the board's approval. Based on our analysis of the event, the anticipated visitation, and the review of our funding levels for similar past events, staff is recommending option one, a sponsorship at the level of $50,000. Carrie Post, of course, is here and available to answer any questions that you might have.
Got a motion for staff recommendation, second. Ms. Post, is there anything you want to add, subtract, or augment? Two comments that have been made. It's been a long discussion. Is this a good group that we are supporting here? A decent, okay, good, good. They're not the OJs. All right, all right, Ms. Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to acknowledge Heather Mitchell, who's been with us all evening.
Who?
Being here. Heather Mitchell, TCC Foundation, hosting the concert. This will be a huge one for this summer. Folks are going to be very excited. So, this is, and Heather, I acknowledge, we've talked about this and I've talked with others, Carrie, you know, as it's moved through this process. So I think it is important to say, Ms. County Administrator, the analysis you just gave us, what you all did was look at if TCC had applied in cycle, what they would have been eligible for, and that's based on the requirements that we have for other large events. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, we, things change on the dais all the time. I mean, we may take a recommendation or we may change it or we may reject it. That's been happening a lot this evening. But I do have to say this, and Carrie, I mean, I've been watching this come through the process without unpacking everything because it's been a long history. I think we got attached to a $100,000 number early in the process because of a different grant and a different, you know, facilities grant, everything like that. At least that's my understanding. That was part of the discussion even at Coka a while back. And then that was a different grant, different agreement with the county, so then it came to the TDC board, right? And that's where you all took up $100,000. So I'm not sure what transpired in those conversations, but I do think we need to be in line with the eligibility requirements. I mean, there's a fairness component there. So I think this has put us in a kind of a difficult position because the TDC board did approve more money than what the recommendation is from county staff, from the county administrator and his staff. So, and which includes you, of course. So I just, I wanted to acknowledge that because this is, this is kind of a difficult one. There's expectations made and other things. Appreciate the TDC board, the motion's on the table, and as I've shared before, I mean, I think if we had looked at this in a different way and assessed those eligibility requirements, what they would have been eligible for had they come through the cycle, $50,000 is a good investment in this concert and people are going to be looking forward to it, for sure. But I think, I think we just got to be careful when we're moving through these things to make sure that we don't set those expectations too high. That's all I can say. It's no problem, I mean, that's why there's been a lot of conversations for a long time. I think it's, there is a discrepancy if this motion passes between our action and what's happening in the TDC, and I just wanted to acknowledge that. I'm good with the motion on the table. It is the analysis that we have from the county administrator and his staff, but TCC is a great partner. I appreciate the good work, looking forward to the concert, and I'm glad we can do this much, but just wanted to kind of talk about the process because it makes a difference. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Welch, followed by Commissioner Minor, then the Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to support, obviously, as second of the motion. I think maybe next year, if, I think $50,000 is fair for this year, but maybe next year, you know, if the TDC still feels like it's worth $100,000 and it goes through the normal grant cycle, you know, because I think this is a remarkable event and you can, I think it's funny when you look at the analysis of this because you can tell, you know, it's very wonky because it says the first year concert features Thomas Luther Bryan, you know, an American country music singer, which is, you know, nobody knows who Thomas Luther Bryan is, but we know who Luke Bryan is, right? So also a South Georgia guy, so kind of a regional act and a big, big time act. So kudos to Heather and the folks at the foundation at TCC for bringing in really a world-class act to Tallahassee, who has been here before, but not in the capacity of essentially helping out TCC, one of our great community partners that really puts, keeps a lot of people in the economy and really contributes a lot to the community. So this is a big deal. I think the Rock the Roost thing is going to be exciting. Regrettably, I will not be here to attend, so I apologize. But I look forward to seeing many more with really many more incredible acts, you know, in the future. So, and I think it probably warrants that funding the next time. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sounds like he was talking about the OJs. Commissioner Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a real quick question, Ms. Post, if I didn't ask this, it would bug me. It says that TCC has a goal of selling 20,000 tickets, bringing visitors in from across the southeast with an estimated 6,000 room nights. That seems pretty high to me, but is that, is that in line with similar events?
It is, it is, Commissioner, because when we look at our other large events, and we did work with Heather to provide that estimate, and looking at, because she's like, you know, how do we try to gauge this? And we looked at other large events. We also looked at the time of year that it is. But it is definitely in line, it's definitely on a conservative level, but when you look at the number of visitors that are estimated to come, the 20,000, and we look at other events that have, that can bring in 20,000, which is like Red Hills and Springtime Tallahassee, that those number of room nights is in alignment with that.
Okay, all right, sounds good. It's about 30%, so it's about.
Of folks that would be out of town, correct. Otherwise, it's local, you have a lot of local folks, but there's also going to be a lot of people coming in from out of town to attend the event and probably having a really good time and not wanting to drive home to South Georgia or wherever, so they're going to stay here.
Yeah, sounds good. Okay, great, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, just.
Okay, Ms. Vice Chair, you want to speak right now? Oh, after, okay, okay. Commissioner Cummings?
Yes, I just have a question. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you so much. The tourism dollars that TCC missed the deadline for, what is it consistent every year as far as the application deadline?
It is, well, the dates may vary slightly, like from week to week, but it's typically a summer cycle of when it's open and then it gets processed and then the recommendations are made to the tourist development council at their September meeting so they can be awarded for the next fiscal year because some events are in October. But at the time, TCC had not secured the artists, so it's understandable why they were not able to go through the grant cycle this year.
Okay, and certainly we look at the economic impact that that particular event will have on the local economy, but we also look at local events too and whether or not those local events will bring in outside tourists as well.
Correct, Commissioner. Our tourist development grants are based on number of room nights generated. There is a grid as far as the different categories of estimated number of room nights generated by an event, and the grant review committee, there's a range because again, it also depends on, like July is very much a need period for us. That's going to give us visitation at a time when we need it. So, you know, they're going to look at that, you know, next year when they go through their grant review cycle. So again, lots of factors are taken into consideration.
Was this the first time a TCC had applied for the tourism grant?
Yes, it is.
Oh, okay. So can you give me those deadline dates again?
Well, we'll do, we have not given the, established the FY '23 grant cycle yet. It's going to be in June, but it's, the usual pattern is like mid-June and it's usually about a 45-day open cycle for applications, so it would go through like mid-July.
Okay, and one last question, Mr. Chair. Are those dates publicized, advertised?
Absolutely.
They are on the website or where?
Everywhere. We sent out a press release, we put it all in newsletters, we posted on our Facebook page, I mean, we do, and we always, you know, again, utilize our groups and our partnerships like DIA and Coka to also help, and OEV, anywhere we can, the chambers, to help extend the reach to let everybody know our grant cycle is open.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Dozier?
One quick follow-up. Commissioner Cummings, you reminded me that I'm going way back, it might have been the Jazz and Blues Festival or something else years ago. Not all organizations have everything in place for that summer application cycle, right? We, some people have struggled with that a little bit. Those organizations that have annual events, they're standing, they know what it is and, you know, for the springtime events, they finish it and then they're applying. Is that correct, Carrie? So.
Yeah, if it's an established event, but it's a lot of times a new event and that's where we do take out-of-cycle requests, which is just what like TCC did. And we did it last year for Soul of the South Side.
Yes.
Same thing that they are, you know, were, the TDC is a public body, people can come and request for that event, but we want to encourage people to go through the grant process. So even though they may not be able to in the first year, which is what we're doing here today, we do encourage events to go into the process the following year.
Okay, so, and I, yes, I thought Soul of the South Side happened as well, so we've had a few of these over time. I don't know if we need, Ms. County Administrator, a second grant process. I think we talked about that many years ago and that's probably too big of a lift because you do have the option to go out of cycle. But maybe we need to, you know, have that codified a little bit. If you are applying out of cycle, is it because you are a brand-new event? Is it, are you meeting certain requirements, things like that? I'm just thinking about it here in this conversation, but that, since that is an opportunity that not everyone knows about, to your point, Commissioner Cummings, that the dates are advertised and they just may, some may think, well, we just missed it. Thankfully, TCC, Soul of the South Side, has talked with you and, you know, moved that forward. But it may be something that we want to look at codifying so that people do know, if they come up with a brilliant idea in October, they could still approach the TDC and have a conversation about out-of-cycle funding.
Typically, it's a function of funding.
Right.
That everybody is requesting and not everybody, you know, there's never enough money to go around, so we would be holding back or allocating more to, you know, in order to enable to do a second cycle. Like for example, with the sports grants.
Right.
They don't allocate, I mean, just because the need isn't there, because all the events aren't scheduled yet for sports events, so they do two cycles with sports, but with special events, it's typically, again, been an out-of, I mean, a regular annual cycle, but those events that are new, that aren't, aren't able to go into the grant cycle, then are brought before the TDC for consideration.
Right, and it's coming out of fund balance or something else. I understand, I mean, there may be a limited amount of money within that particular grant program in your budget. And that's what you're talking about, is that sports may not use all the money, they've got two cycles, but the larger events do. But obviously, you are taking those out-of-cycle events into consideration and now funding two of them, just in the last couple of years. So even if that money's coming out of the fund balance and not the typical budget line item, this county administrator, am I saying this correctly? Because even if it's coming out of a different source, we are still accepting those requests and bringing them before the TDC, and it seems like we may need to let people know that that is possible and set some guidelines so people can look at that if they are a new event and they didn't have everything in order over the summer.
I think that's, yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Dozier, I think that is, I think you've really hit upon a policy direction that would be appropriate coming from this board. What you're saying is exactly right, and what Carrie is saying is exactly right from a programmatic standpoint in holding back money versus what we do. And what she's doing now is not setting up a discreet process whereby you'd be able to consider these, but is really an exception to the process when she brings this forward and says, this is worthy of your consideration as an exception to the process and out of fund balance. What you're suggesting again is, is policy direction that if we got it from you, we certainly would bring something like that, analyze that and bring something like that back to you.
I, thank you, Ms. County Administrator. I just simply think because we've had two recent examples, and I was digging back a number of years for Jazz and Blues, remembering that one, we could anticipate this coming up again in the future because thankfully, we've got more and more events happening, right? So, Mr. Vice Chair, were you the maker of the motion?
Yes.
If you don't mind a friendly amendment to... Um, if you don't mind a friendly amendment to, uh, direct staff to just look at this, um, look at this issue and bring us back some recommendations and policy guidance. And again, not a separate cycle, there's no line item. It would, it would be a unique case. Um, I think you've got that for Carrie, for Mr. County Administrator. It, it's based on precedent, um, not a whole new cycle or something else like that.
Okay, Commissioners, the chairman wants to, uh, put the gavel down. I don't want, I don't want to go out, I don't want, she says that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay. We all out in the weeds.
Thank you.
And, and, you know, let's keep the thing on the road. The issue tonight is, uh, do we want to, the motion calls for, do we want to support $50,000? We done changed the oil, kicked the tires, looked under the hood, do we want $50,000? Now, um, over the last two years, it's been irregular. There's a hell of a lot of things that have been, uh, not in the norm. So if something has occurred that has not been, uh, a normative, uh, procedural, um, aspect of what we've followed, everything in the last two years has been somewhat, um, wishy-washy, jacked up. So I don't think that we could take the last two years as a, um, a new precedent and as things, uh, if we ever reestablish a norm line, um, we might be able to, uh, to, uh, not see this as a, um, some kind of special incident or something. It's, it's a blip, but it's not our long-term norm line. So I want to also be sensitive to, um, a lot of rescheduling and approaches to how we have thought things, uh, over the last two years. All right, we talked a lot on this. The chairman's been very patient tonight, hadn't he?
Yes.
Absolutely. He's let everybody say what they wanted to. Um, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, the same sign. All right, uh, Ms. Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair, uh, two things. One, first is, um, I had a conversation with Kristi Henry from Soul of Tallahassee, and I was going to take a shot of the dark and see if you guys would just do this blindly, but this, but then I had thought better, because that's not the way we do business. Um, Soul of Tallahassee will take place on May the 14th through the 22nd. What she told me was due to, uh, expanding from three days to a week and also trying to integrate, integrate Leon County agencies and human service, uh, programming into their, into their, uh, programming of, of events and everything, um, that they received $5,000 from TDC. What I'm asking is that we give them another $5,000 to help out with the, from three, from three days to a week. And so what I'm asking for is agenda item to come back, looking at that sponsorship from, uh, to give them an extra $5,000 and actually to also have them come present, uh, to us during our April meeting, and I think that, when is our April meeting? Mr. Administrator? When's the April agenda meeting?
When is the April meeting?
14th.
14th? I think they should give them enough time to, to get done whatever they need done if we're able to approve it then. Uh, so that would be my motion, that we have an agenda item come back, uh, at the April 14th meeting, looking at doing an additional $5,000 sponsorship for Soul of Tallahassee to help out, uh, with, um, extra expenses due to...
Ms. Vice Chair, I'm going to ask you to put that on hold. Uh, I got a meeting that has a typed-out situation. I think when you bring it up under your time, that'll be apropos. It's not germane to anything before us right now. In fact, right here on my, my list of things to bring up tonight, I got the Soul of South Side.
Okay, okay, well, Mr. Mr., uh, Mr. Chair, I'll let you do that at the end, then. I just want to make sure we talk about it. I'll, I'll rescind my motion.
All right, thank you.
I want to, I want to, I want to make a, I want to see, on the chair's behalf, we can make another gen, general modification moving up, because I think it'd be pretty simple and quick. Item 27 to the next agenda item is looking at funding for, we're, we're good, we're good. Just looking at funding for our Orange Avenue apartment, it's some great news. Uh, and so I'll make a motion that we move up item 27 to the next item.
Can we, do we have a second? Can the chairman second it? Chairman seconds it? Okay, Commissioner Dozier.
Um, I appreciate it, Commissioner Maddox. Yes, Brenda, everybody's been waiting a long time, but we also have people who are waiting to speak on, um, discretionary funding levels. So I just wanted to point that out. Y'all can go whichever way you want, but we've had people waiting to speak on all of these items for hours, so just to be fair. Thank you.
I'm so glad you pointed that out. Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Uh, Ms. Ms. Williams, we are going to treat the item which you've been waiting also patiently. The chairman knows the list of questions that he has for that item that is mentioned, and I know the chairman's question's going to be lengthy. So knowing the chairman, Commissioner Dozier, I kind of was looking at crystal ball, so I wanted to, um, expedite her presence. Okay, go ahead.
Wait, is, is, we didn't have a vote?
I'm sorry.
There was a motion and a second.
Those in favor of the, uh, motion that we, uh, modify the agenda for the add-on item to come now, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Okay. Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, uh, the item before you now, item 27, uh, is a, uh, provides a status report on the redevelopment of the Tallahassee Housing Authority's Orange Avenue Apartments. Uh, it also presents...
Mr. Chair, move staff recommendation with, uh, thanks from staff.
All right, we got a motion.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, before there's a motion on the table, I need to recuse myself, and I must, I must enter that into the record before we have a motion and a second. Thank you. Sorry, I was trying to jump in there after the item was introduced. Um...
Okay, we have a motion. No, no, you just...
No, sir, I have to, I have to make a statement.
She has a statement.
Madam County Administrator, if you'd like...
She has a statement to read. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Um, this is not a county decision. This was something handled through the Tallahassee Housing Authority, but they have selected Mad Dog Construction, which is owned by my father and his wife, as the contractor. Um, again, the county had no involvement in these decisions, but now that we are being asked to contribute funds to the construction, I do have a conflict of interest, and I will be recusing myself from this vote and any discussion on it.
Move staff recommendation? Thank you, Commissioner Dozier.
We had a motion, a second by Commissioner, going once, going twice, Commissioner... Commissioner Minor. All right. Yeah, for a second. Yes, yes, yes. Um, Ms. Williams, you're here from the Tallahassee Housing Authority. I've, I've, I've used your name a lot tonight, and you've, and, um, I just want to say a compliment to the processes that, uh, you and your organization have exercised. You've made indelible, um, impressions upon what, uh, due process for, um, engagement of the public, uh, the public at large, uh, public entities and institutions, uh, federal, the local, um, state engagement. I mean, you've worked this and shown us how it's to be done, and that's why I've used your name, uh, in particular in contrast to, uh, agenda item number six. Uh, I want to salute you tonight, uh, thanking you for your leadership as you're on the precipice of, um, turning dirt into kickoff, and I want other commissioners to weigh in and, with the exception of Commissioner Dozier, because she's excited about it too, and, um, and can't even participate. That's too bad. But Commissioner Minor, Cummings, Vice Chair, uh, we want you to go around in that order. If there's any kudos you want to pass, or any questions that you want to ask, uh, Ms.
If, if, if they didn't ring here for questions, we did move this agenda item up to, I would, I would say, if you guys have no questions, that we go ahead and move forward the vote. If you have questions, fine, but we did move it up and place an item.
Yeah, if they want the pina colada on Ms. Williams, they can. I'm the chairman. Go ahead, Ms. Minor, if you want to. You don't want to?
I'm good, thank you.
Good, good, good.
Ms. Williams, thank you.
Ms. Cummings?
Yes, Commissioner Chair, as I've always said, I commend, um, Ms. Williams for the hard work she and her staff has done. I support their recommendation here. We certainly support, uh, you know, assisting those, those individual clients that she has down there. Thank the staff for the analysis, it's real clear, um, and, uh, I certainly support the motion on the floor.
Great, 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 great. Ms. Vice Chair?
Preenah Hafield, thank you so much. That's Tourism Dirt.
Brenda, when is the, uh, dirt turning?
Well, first of all, I want to thank, uh, the commission for your support. Um, a year ago, we didn't know what we were going to do. Uh, the cost of construction is through the roof. It's been going up and down for the past several months. We didn't know how we were going to make it happen, and, uh, this commission has come through and supported us, and we're very appreciative of, of Vince and your staff as well. Um, and to answer your question, um, we're looking to have a groundbreaking inmate.
Right.
And I'd like to see all of you there.
Make sure you have a shovel.
With your gold shovels.
Make sure that the district commissioner and chairman has a shovel. And, uh, Vince and Shington, you guys rocked on this one, and you showed, um, and have helped, uh, our community to, uh, set a new standard of how you bring 200 units to a community. Uh, all in favor of the motion that's before us, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Thank you very much. All right, our next item?
Thank you, Commissioner Chairman. Commissioners, uh, this item, last item on general business, item 22, uh, is one that, um, is brought to you annually as one of the first steps in your overall budget process. Uh, and Commissioners, uh, to ensure that, uh, funding is provided in a, in a transparent, equitable manner, uh, the county follows, uh, funding guidelines established, uh, in policy and in local ordinance, uh, relative to this item. Specifically, the item presents a series of recommendations to establish funding levels for our outside, uh, nonprofit agencies, including setting the funding level for, uh, the next two-year grant cycle for the CHSP. Uh, regarding CHSP, in addition to the funding recommended in this item, uh, for the upcoming budget cycle, Commissioners, you'll also recall that the county and the city have provided, uh, $3 million, uh, from ARPA funds to address the new homelessness category. Uh, no funding reductions are recommended. Uh, level funding is, is being recommended throughout this item. Uh, with that, I have, uh, we have one speaker card and happy to answer questions. We're recommending options one through five, and the one speaker is Kelly Adi.
Kelly, you're up. State your name and address.
Thank you. Kelly Adi. Um, I work with the Oasis Center for Women and Girls. My address is 1075 Alameda Drive. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am literally so tired, I may fall over. So I don't know how you all do this, but you do such a good job at it. Um, my comments are really two things. First of all, the, the earlier agenda item, you just approved an agenda item for the Council on the Status of Men and Boys for $140,000 of county funding. The Commission on the Status of Women and Girls receives $20,000 from the county. Altogether, the Commission, the new Council on Men and Boys, is receiving $350,000, and the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls receives $40,000. So that is what I have been inundated with since the original, uh, request came forward. There is no way that the community can see parity between that, and, um, I, I really think it's an opportunity for us, and it may just be a blessing in disguise. It's an opportunity for the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls to take a hard look at whether or not the role of being just policy advisors is the best role for the commission. So I just wanted to let you know that we'll be back in April with sort of a reimagined version of the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls and a request for increased funding for a full-time executive director at a minimum and maybe a little bit more. But I just wanted to have, let you know that that was there, because I'm really worried if you pass this at the $20,000 level for the commission through Oasis that we're going to, that's what it's going to be for the year. So I'm asking you to please think about that. The other thing is just a comment from me after 27 years of being in the community and doing human service work. I, I, I understand at some level why the funding for CHSP has to stay level, and another level, I just don't. I think we're getting ready to go into a two-year funding cycle where, where that means no increases for the services that we're providing. And one of the ways to think about that is the Council on the Status of Men and Boys just received a funding item from you all that is 27% or 24% of all the CHSP funding for all human service organizations in the community. And so I think, uh, I think that just requires that we take a deeper look at it and whether or not the CHSP process is just being rolled forward every year, as opposed to actually looking at what those organizations are contributing to ending violence in the community and whether or not it's time to really increase the funding for them as well. So two points that I wanted to make. Thank you very much for your leadership.
Excellent points. I'm disappointed that it took the, um, the, the Men and Boys Council for anybody to say a mumbling word from the Women and Girls. Uh, for years, I have thought they've been very passive, and they're ask, they're underasked, and, um, I'm disappointed it took this whole thing of Men and Boys to come forward that we hear anybody ask for some more money for Women and Girls, and that's not our fault. Now, Commissioner Dozier, followed by Commissioner Cummings, uh, I'd like to know your thoughts. Is this what parity or equity looks like? Uh, you, the women here, what y'all got to say?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. First, as we heard in our last discussion, these are issues for all of us, gender aside. And I think, Commissioner Minor, others, you made that, those comments earlier, so I do appreciate listening to Commissioner Cummings and I first. We will certainly go first here on International Women's Day. Um, but yes, I am glad that we have, um, collaborative spirit on this. Um, Kelly and I have talked about this a lot, and thank you for your leadership and your advocacy. Um, you've now returned to Oasis, and I'm, if I'm remembering correctly, the leading effort in creating the Commission on Status of Women and the Girls, uh, 12, 14 years ago, I think it was? So thank you. We, we didn't, I, my reflection, at that time, we set up something that was workable, but over the years, we have taken a pause, and I, um, at some point, we did, uh, strategic planning with, um, Dr. Bryant and Curtis Richard, Commissioner Richardson and I were appointed by our respective boards to work with, um, CSWG. In that process, I think some of the challenges you hear, um, Kelly, you talking about and others, um, that really was lifted up. I mean, there is a tremendous workload. It is a lot of reporting, a lot of data finding, and there's a lot of good work, but the policy recommendations, it is kind of, it's very different than what we've been talking about and contemplating with, um, Men and Boys now in this, in this recent conversation. So I, I wanted to acknowledge that because you have done, uh, the commission has done a lot of work over the years to try to be more strategic, to try to use the funds more effectively, and if we'll remember, the county started first funding CSWG. The city joined us after a few years, and that doubled the funding. So I'm actually, excuse me, it has been a long day for all of us. Oasis is hosting two events today, which I don't know how you do that, and you're deciding to stay with us this evening. That's how important this is to you, so thank you for that. Um, I, I think it is very interesting to take a different look at CSWG. I don't know what that might, um, be like in the future, but, um, I will look forward to hearing the thoughts of the commission and to having a discussion with our partners. However, today, and Mr. County Administrator, we, we talked about this yesterday, our typical process is we set a maximum of discretionary funding level today, and that means through the budget process, right? We can't go above that 20,000. So, um, check me on this, Mr. County Administrator, if I get it wrong, but we talked through this some yesterday, and you all reminded me that the last time we increased funding, we did it out-of-cycle. It came, um, I believe from contingency, from fund balance, and the following year, it was added into the discretionary, um, funding levels. Is that correct?
That's correct. Are we missing anything, Alan? Alan, okay.
I should have said, yes, this might have been Alan's brainchild yesterday, so thank you. Um, so with that, if, and again, Mr. County Administrator, you can help me on this motion.
Sure.
Um, I would like to make a motion for, and I'm getting back to my options now, options one through five with an additional, um, item that says we will contemplate an agenda item coming back, reflecting CSWG's work, um, over the next few months with the city, with other partners. We're not making any decisions today, but just want to put that placeholder that we are willing to accept an agenda item when that comes to us. I think you're already in conversation with the city. Is that correct? So, um, that just, that, that leaves the opening, but we can leave discretionary funding levels as they are for right now. Um, Mr. County Administrator?
I'll stick with it.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll point to the motion. But if we're setting discretionary. Oh, if we're setting the discretionary at the maximum that we have here, which is the same as last year, correct?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, I think we're, we're setting the maximum, yes. That's, that's a problem we were trying to work through yesterday was knowing that this request may come in the next few months. We didn't want to, I didn't want to pick an arbitrary number out of the sky today because we don't know what that proposal is. And I don't, we don't know what the city is going to be thinking about this or anything else.
Right, right. Let me, let me get through. The thought is, if we're setting the maximum, we can't change the maximum after today, correct?
Right.
Mr. Administrator? All right. So if the agenda item comes back and there's an increase in the amount, then where are we going? I guess we could contemplate it as a budget discussion item to increase?
No, sir. That's what we were just, what we have done in the past. I could let you gentlemen explain this, but it would be continued, it would be fund balance. And that's how we handled the CSWG increase the last time. And then it was folded into the discretionary.
The following year.
Maxims the following year. So, Mr. County Administrator, would you like to chime in on this?
Just to say that's correct.
Okay.
Okay, okay, okay.
Thank you, sir.
You said that, I just didn't catch it.
It's all right. It's been a long, long day, it's a long night for all of us. But I do, I really have to appreciate County Administrator and the Deputy County Administrator for kind of problem solving this yesterday and reminding me that, or realizing that this is how we handled in the past. Because we don't want to lose that opportunity. But again, didn't want to just pick a number out of the sky.
But we would need to have the agenda item prior to budget.
It would come, I mean, not necessarily, right, Mr. County Administrator? I mean, we can use the fund balance at any point.
Correct. It could even be funded out of the current year budget.
Or the current year budget, right. There's a lot more work to go into this. There's a lot of discussions that happen. I don't want to get ahead of anyone on those decisions or those discussions. But just want that in the motion so the County Administrator understands that we're willing to see that agenda item come back if and when there is a request. Good? Okay. That would be my motion. Thank you very much. And I guess the last, thank you to all of our human service partners. This has been an extraordinary couple of years. And we have worked tremendously well together. And Leslie, other, thank you for staying and for all of our staff who work so hard. All the CHSP staff, everyone, Shington. So that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Was that second?
All right.
Yeah, I, I second the motion. Is there another, who else wants to speak on this item? Commissioner Meyer, followed by Commissioner Cummings. And I'm sorry, Commissioner Cummings, Commissioner Meyer, and then our chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Just really quickly, I support the motion on the floor. I support Commissioner Dozier's modification to the, the staff recommendation on this. I think.
Commissioner Meyer, I'm so sorry. I said Commissioner Cummings first. The women, it's, come on, it's Women's History Month.
I didn't hear you. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Go right, Commissioner Cummings, go right ahead.
No, you go ahead.
No, no, no.
Don't make me grab this gavel. Commissioner Cummings.
It is International Women's Day. I'm going to defer to my colleague, Commissioner Cummings.
Commissioner Cummings, I'm so sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Meyer. Emphasizing that this is Women's History Month and also reflecting on today's activities that were sponsored by the Oasis Council. And Ms. Adi, the Executive Director, is here. And so I appreciate her comments. However, I recognize the significance of women and girls, significance of looking at the status of men and boys. But I, I don't want to pit one against the other. There are significant issues as it relates to both, to both groups. And clearly, women are significant. We're, we're women and we laud our position and we want to support our women and girls. And I believe that perhaps there is some room for us to address some of the issues with funding, with the status of women and, and girls. And I'm certainly willing to look at that and address, address that as a commission member. However, I, I don't want to pit one against the other because clearly, there are major issues with our boys. If you look at the sheriff's anatomy of a homicide, we're, thank God, we are not looking at those type issues with our girls right now. At least not to that proportion. But I think perhaps, I've been on this commission a little over a year and I've seen the budget for the Oasis Center remain the same. It was $20,000 last year, $20,000 this year. And so I think if we have some more analysis, some more information from Oasis, and I think clearly it will demonstrate that more funding is needed. I certainly would be in favor of that. But I just don't want to pit one group against another because it's, I think we're looking at apples and oranges if we do that. So I certainly support the motion on the floor.
I think you speak with wisdom there. I want to do the same thing. I know we don't talk about parity, but let's not, if we can some kind of way not pit, pit these things. They both do very important things. But to mention one in comparison to the other, let's just talk about the issue, these two issues separately. And, and, and judge them off the separate merits that they, that they present for our community, I think would be most effective. Commissioner Meyer, now you may speak, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Commissioner Cummings, thank you. Sorry for the, for the mix-up. Well, regarding your comment, Commissioner Maddox, I know it might sound superficial at first, but that name change would go a long way toward helping to put some distance between those two organizations. The way they're named now, it's just, it's immediately, your mind goes to comparing the two. I support the motion on the floor. I also will look forward to the agenda item coming back on the Commission on Status of Women and Girls. A phone call I had with many of, of the members on the Commission a while back was spent talking about the effects of COVID-19 on women throughout the country, but of course, specifically here in Leon County. There are women all throughout this country who have had their careers upended by the pandemic. And so I think now is a very opportune time for us to take a look at what these needs are here in Leon County and, and figure out what the Commission on Status of Women and Girls can do to help address their needs. Help them get their careers back on track. Help them get their earning power back to what it was before the pandemic. Because it's not coming back at the rate as it is for men. So I think this discussion is very timely. So I support the motion on the floor and look forward to the agenda item coming back. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Welsh, you might want to get in line before Commissioner Proctor because he said he got a lot to say. You good? All right. Mr. Chairman, this is all yours.
Mr. Vice Chairman, thank you for allowing the chairman to speak tonight. I'm appreciative. As I looked at these items, Commissioners, I, I think that the motion that we not cap this night, we, we should not cap this. And I'm asking for additional money for domestic violence. Corollary Council, which is a $25,000. The Oasis Center, which is $20,000. So we got two women's groups for a combined total, huge amount, $45,000. Looking at the attachments which came with the attachment four, dealing with domestic violence, there is a march to end domestic violence schedule for this year. And I would, I would love if staff would allow us to know when that march is scheduled. It's been interrupted over the last couple of years. But I suppose it's speaking to this year. In attachment four on page 21 of 91, collaborative partners here is just, look at it, y'all. Y'all, y'all look it up on the 16. They have 16 agency partners for, for domestic violence. People came in here today and oppose the boys, men and boys because we had too many silts stocking folk. Where's the silts stocking folk for this right here? Why ain't there but 16 partners? I want to see 50 partners for domestic violence. There's only two black churches that I recognize out of the 16. And we suggested that only two black churches are impacted by domestic violence. Look at this list. The sheriff sent up here a list of, you can't get no better. You just can't get more creme de la creme of a community than his list. But I believe that this group been around and this is the best and the brightest of their collective partners. And this issue is pervasive. And as I read the item, Commissioners, one of the things which was, which was moving under exhibit B of six, the number and effectiveness of services for victims has increased dramatically, dramatically. The actual number of incidents of domestic violence continues to rise. In essence, perpetrators move on to new victims. I say to you, if there's a dramatic rise, perpetrators move on to new victims and there's only no increase for the financial support that acknowledges to us a dramatic rise and spread, that we're not acting consistent with the data presented in front of us. So in the spirit of Commissioner Dozier's motion, I believe that we all lift the cap and go back to an added consideration beyond for domestic violence. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your patience. Also, on the agenda item, same agenda item, this village sent to us their attachment. And what they indicated to us is that there is a, of the, under their JAC, Juvenile Assessment Center, 71.85% of the persons who are under JAC are black. In the same 15, number 15, Commissioner Cummings, those persons who are receiving the data for the silver citation during the same reporting timeframe that captures 71% black shows that for silver citation, 48.9% are white. Now, my question is, why are blacks 71.85% of JAC but only 44% of silver citation recipients? Another question stated a different way. White people are 26.8% of JAC, but 48.9% of silver citation recipients. I'm very disturbed by this data offered to us, shared to us. And the adult jail rate at the Leon County Detention Center also is around 71, 72, 3%. And if we got any staff people could know anything different, share it. But as a PSCC chairperson, I see these numbers every month. And we run over 70% black at that jail. But it's 70% at the JAC. But when you begin to talk about the discretionary things like diversion and who walks, who gets nothing, I don't understand how 26%, which is the white population, get nearly 50% of silver citation. Something is wrong. I'm in trouble. Then Commissioners, this is why Commissioner Dozier, you know, put, asked that we would advance because if we look through these things, these things are not settled. I'm pondering tonight with Ms. Adi, as well as our two female Commissioners, is equity, a $70,000 ask for boys and men and a $20,000 commitment to women and girls. I, I'm not sure how you reconcile that with program. But one of the things that the sheriff, if you look at his, his thinking, their litmus test for evaluation, the aggressive going forward. So there's a program differential that if you look at the sheriff's proposal, go through all of them elements and you see that they done put some stuff out there. Now, the Women and Girls had a head start. That first year they brought that report, it was great. And I don't know, we're late starting with the boys and the men. But they've put together something that's, that's so compelling that all of these people who kicking up $70,000 said no. The man brought some paper in here that said a anatomy of a homicide and walked us through five years of, of, of data. The Women and Girls have not brought that. I wish they would. Nothing prevents them. And when you bring that kind of data, this body and the other bodies across this community have shown themselves responsive and embracing of. And I believe that just because we, we say, well, we did it, did it, did it, we'll bring them a program that equals what the men are doing. So we just not giving away money if you ain't got no program. But you all feel provoked to stand tall and shoulder to shoulder with what our. And then Commissioners, I like in this item to say that I think that we're, we're undergiven to, we have undergiven to a couple other issues, but I won't prolong it. But I'd like to say, let us not box ourselves in to this discretionary limit tonight. I've not had a chance, and you've not had a chance possibly, of evaluating the impacts of COVID. I'm not sure that these agencies have taken and had a chance to assess COVID. I'm not even sure if they have assessed their gas bill and what it takes to drive a car, their vans. It certainly ain't reflected in these old numbers that we're at. So if we're gonna be, it's just time to move up. I know it's time, and I'd like to see us give $10,000 to the Soul Santa. We're giving $2,500 to French Town and $1,500 to Walker Ford. Y'all haven't been out there to see how many children show up? These is 32304 babies. I believe that if we're gonna make Soul Santa relevant and they don't give away cheap chalk toys, the cheapest toys that money can buy for neighborhoods of children, that we ought to stand up and act like we care. And $1,500 for all the kids in Bond does not, is not reflective of the hearts that we really embody. So I'm wanting us to give $5,000 to our babies down there in Bond for Christmas. And I want us to give $5,000 to the babies over in 32304 in Springfield and back over French Town as well. That's a low place. When we look at the Martin Luther King Program, costs have gone up. The awards has just gone up. The cost to do programming has, I believe that ought to be a $6,000. So that's a $1,500 increase. All I'm saying, Commissioner, these things will come back to us. But I don't want this thing strapped down so tight that we're really embarrassingly non-responsive to needs that I know we want to embrace and care for. So in addition to parity with Ms. Adi's ask, Commissioner Dozier's ask, domestic violence, this other $20,000, as well as for the children, they worth more than $4,000. They damn worth more. I need more. We ought to do more. And I'm asking y'all for more. That's what I want. So those are the things, and that's why it was gonna take me a long time. And I hope that this motion embraces what I'm asking for. And I'm asking the maker, is there room for what I've just asked for?
Hey, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Dozier, seems like Commissioner Proctor is asking you to increase the amount of our discretionary funding from what is currently listed at 16, I believe, 6, 9, 5 million to whatever amount that, I don't think he gave a specific amount. But that is his request, Commissioner Dozier. I'm throwing it back to you as maker of motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. And you can tell we've all been here a long time when you start, you know.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Uh, getting a little amused by what's, you know...
Yeah.
Let me, let me just rephrase here. You don't have to make the answer to this question because you're not the maker of the motion, right?
That's right.
Because, uh, the chairman makes a lot of good points.
Mm-hmm.
There are tremendous number of needs in our community, Ms. Chair. You're absolutely right. Um, what I see is that the organizations that have been on the discretionary funding list for years understand this process. They come to us, the Mass Violence Coordinating Council, others have come to us, um, and asked us to increase funding. And there are times even, um, and I hate to single out Legal Services in North Florida, but you're still here, when there is a really special need. And even if, um, you know, you're in the other, in, in the CHSP process, uh, Carney Center, Legal Services, we have found a way to do other funding at times. And I, I do trust these organizations understand, um, we need to have that dialogue before we get to the maximum discretionary funding level item, which always comes up in March. So, um, the need is always there. Um, I'm kinda, I'm gonna smile at Kelly now because, "Give us the money. There's always more need, right? We could always do more. We understand that." I'm not, I'm not in position right now to increase those funding levels without having heard from those organizations first. Because if they're, if we needed it this year, I think we would have heard of, from them because that is what has happened in the past. Um, and yes, I, I do want to acknowledge, we've had a couple of rough years, and we've had a lot of emergency funding, ARPA and CARES.
Yeah.
And that has helped. But, Ms. Chair, you did mention, you know, gas prices, other things. This could be a really rough year without any emergency funding. That, that's something we're gonna need to reflect on coming months, the next year. It's, it's hitting everybody, from construction to, uh, human service agencies. Um, but at this point, I'm, I'm, think I'm sticking with the precedent that these organizations have come to us in the past and asked for increase when and if needed, whether they're on this list or not. And having not received any of those requests, I'm gonna stick with the, um, staff recommendation for these, um, for the discretionary funding levels. And this is exactly why I ask for the addendum of bringing back that agenda item for C S W G. Because this is the process. We always leave it here. But we could receive one of those requests in the future and contemplate it out of the budget cycle.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. I don't often stick my foot in my mouth, especially before I have conversation with staff about what I'm about to stick in my mouth as far as my foot. That's what I'm concerned here. But, um, Commissioner Dozier, I remember back some time when, um, Commissioner Mayor Daley was on the board, and we had a long discussion about discretionary funding. We were trying to figure that thing out, and this is, this is where it goes in the historical data, right? Um, and we were talking about it, and, you know, there was, there was a couple of things we were trying to mix in there. We're just gonna figure it out. And he said, he said, and I think this may be a, a quick fix here. Setting the, setting the discretionary amount at a certain amount does not mean that we're going to approve that amount when it comes to budget. Um, right now, we're at one point six. The thing I did, I, I, I appreciate Commissioner Proctor's comments, and I do think he had a lot of good points, like you said. But the thing I did not necessarily appreciate, take, take out of it, was, was exactly how much you asking us to go up? You know, what's that number look like? Um, given some of the things that, that, the agenda item coming back, some of the things Commissioner Proctor talked about, um, not really knowing right now what property values are gonna look like, right now, we're at one point six-six. I would, let me, let me, let me, let me, let me go to the, to County Administrator first. What I'm, what I'm thinking about asking for is a specific amount to increase, not to say we're gonna end up at that point, but that, uh, we can go up to that point where we set our discretionary, uh, budget come budget time. Speak, talk to me a little bit, Mr. Administrator, about what I'm thinking.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Commissioner Maddox, I didn't want to interrupt you on that or your train of thought on that. I thought you were going in a different direction. I was just gonna remind you that, um, that, that this, your, your own, your ordinance requires you to, uh, to, uh, set your discre, your maximum discretionary levels, uh, uh, before March thirty-first, uh, which of course this would be the last meeting to do that. Um, but that it doesn't prevent you from doing what you just said in, in, in concept, should that be what the board wants to do, which is to set it at a higher amount? Again, that's a policy decision of the board.
Set, set a higher amount? Okay. So, walk with me. I'm sorry.
Mr. Dozier?
Mr. Vice Chair, I, I need to ask a clarifying point.
Yes.
You're, you're saying, um, you're using the one point six because that, that's all of the discretionary, right?
Yes.
Um, if you are, if you're suggesting that we just increase the discretionary line item in general, I'm not sure, w- we have each one of these line, line items within the discretionary category. I, I thought, Ms. County Administrator, that we have to set a maximum for each individual one. It's not like one bucket.
Is that correct?
Or is that practice?
I think you have the flexibility if the board wanted to. Again, you could give us the direction now to set the maximum rate on each of these individuals, or you could set aside additional money and make that decision later in the process, if that's what you wanted to do.
What I was all suggesting is that we set, that we set at, with no specifics. Right now, we're at one point six, period. Okay? What I was gonna recommend is that maybe we set a high maximum of one point eight. Okay? Understanding that we're one point six. I'm not saying we gotta allocate it at all. What I'm saying is that we go up to one point eight, contemplating the piece with the, uh, uh, Commissioner of Status of Women and Girls, contemplating some of the things Commissioner Proctor, um, talked about. So it's already covered. Won't have to, won't have to pull out a general or anything. If these things pass, then it's already in there, going up to one point eight. That's a hundred and fifty grand. I don't think that we should, I don't, I don't think. But I don't want us to think about going anywhere else. So contemplating a maximum of one point eight, right? Understanding right now, we're at one point six-six, one point six-seven. And that one point eight is a little playroom for if this Commissioner of the Status of Women and Girls piece passes, we take it out at one point eight. If there's some other things that we'll look, look at increasing, like, uh, some of the sponsorship things that Commissioner Proctor talked about and some of the other programming, it comes out at one point eight. But under no circumstances do we go above one point eight, one. Two, that we don't have to look at general fund to fund anything because we've given us wiggle room to fund those things that we're talking about here today. So that's, that's, that's what I'm suggesting.
Um, Commissioner Maddox, I... We have a budget. I mean, to come out of general fund at some time later, um, or to be added in as, you know, a standalone, as we've contemplated the agenda item for C S W G, this is still our budget. This is still people's money. Um, we gotta be careful with it. So I, in, you know, you just saying instead of coming out of the general budget, I'm, I'm not sure I can get there with you that it's, this is a complicated one. Let me go back to the discretionary line. Okay. So, um, I think, again, doing this on the fly, there are so many good and incredible needs in our community. But contemplating this i- on the fly during a meeting, during a very long meeting, is challenging because the way you just described it, we've got a hundred K plus, um, placeholder, if you will. Well, we don't know what's coming back from C S W G. We don't know what might, I mean, that, that's kind of a free-for-all. That's, that's an invitation for everyone to say, "I need a few thousand." And then we get into a competition over tho, that limited dollar. Um, I'm, I think that is a really challenging piece. I think if anyone, they didn't come to us before the discretionary item comes up, this is the process. Every organization that's been in this process for a long time, and everybody on that list has been in this process for a long time. They know that this is the month that they come to us. If they need additional funding, they can come and ask for it out of cycle. Um, but I, I hear what you're saying. I, I, I understand that little gap. But without having a line item attached to, I think we're inviting more of a challenge later, um, and a competition. So, Ms. County Administrator, if you've got a, a different suggestion here, I'm willing to hear it. But i- am I thinking through that, I mean, that, that just kind of a general category might be challenging for us going forward?
Yes. Let me, let me just speak to, to the ordinance first because it may provide some, some framework. Obviously, Commissioners, what we're talking about here, and Commissioner Maddox, I don't wanna misinterpret what you're saying, but it seemed like you were kind of focusing in on the outside agency contracts. Um, the reason I say that is because after conferring with the county attorney, we were just trying to remember exactly everything that the ordinance says, because it's a little specific. I said you didn't have to go down to the line item, and, and you don't. But what it does require you to do is to set the maximum on each of the categorical funding levels. So for example, to set the maximum on CHSP, to set the maximum for the outside agencies, and so on. So, um, again, uh, but for example, if the board wished to say, for the outside agency contracts, we wanted to add an additional amount of money. Um, Commissioner Dozier, I'm not speaking to the budgetary practice of, of doing that at this point. I'm just speaking to, um, that the board has the flexibility to do that if, if you, if you so decided, uh, to do that. Again, as long as we set the maximum on each of the categorical areas.
Thank you, Ms. County Administrator. That, that is helpful, um, because this, this ordinance is, we, we, we often run into, um, questions about the rules of this ordinance. It's something that's good to refresh our memory on every year. So thank you both. Man County Attorney, I saw you pulling it up there. So thank you both for that. Um, we, we can keep going on the conversation, Mr. Vice Chair, if you wanna look at one of those categories. But based on what I'm hearing and the general tone, again, these agencies could come in. If they have a specific need, make a request. We have not heard that at this time. Um, but for C S W G, so, um, I'm, I'm content at leaving, leaving the motion where it is.
All right. So, um, motion stands. Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Um, you know, Commissioner Dozier, I hope the range of your heart was larger than, uh, just the women. My heart is that big too. It was also inclusive, uh, of, um, some other considerations here. And, uh, one of the reasons of which, uh, just historically, Allen could tell you better than I, when you say that we wouldn't, do we wanna bring each one of these groups in here and let them justify the money they're getting? That's exactly what we once upon a time did. Everybody who's lain down here who wanted some money, and we went through this for four days, four or five days in the week to do the budgeting, the folks standing all on the wall, all outside. Ken and Barbara would tell you that's what we did. Is that right, Barbara? You stood around the wall and waited your turn, and you stood before, oh, the council, the heavenly council, the county commission. There were groups that could not compete when we began to move groups to, uh, that joint funding thing that the city put money, we put money. Folks got left out when they didn't qualify, and they were not the United, um, what that thing called? The United, the United Way Certified Members. And unless you was a United Way Certified, Recognized Organization, you was left out in the code. So recognizing that that process discriminated against people who were service providers, five-oh-one-C-three. Then we had the issue of some of those five-oh-one-C-threes were not as sophisticated, Ms. Oddie. They didn't, they didn't have their paperwork tight and right. So were they doing the work? Yeah. Were they good on the ground? Yeah. But were they good, uh, in corporate headquarters? No. Those distinctions came out. So some of these, uh, groups that are not, quote, "non-competitive" and what have you, we have methodically over the years, this has been pared down because of those dynamics. But our board, we're not under any stipulation mandate to fund none of these folk. But it has been the measure in the transcendence of our hearts that have empathized with those who were either not corporately tight and right, paper, all tight and right, but they were doing services that we acknowledged. So we created these, this staggered category to try and accommodate everybody. But I hate, um, uh, that one person should, should, um, sit there and impose their thoughts. I'm gonna offer a substitute motion that we set, uh, as a categorical, uh, ceiling at one point eight, uh, million, that gives us the flexibility, uh, to acknowledge gas prices, uh, food prices, and everything else it takes to run an organization competently, efficiently, and effectively. Uh, I respect our staff, but I also respect that our staff works for me. I don't work for the staff. So I'm not gonna contort my mind to, uh, be confined by their limits. I am going to not contort my thoughts. I'm gonna ask my staff to stretch their minds to the height of my thoughts. That's why we pay them. That's their job. One point eight million dollars to cover needs for more than just these women, a political look. Everybody ought to be carried, carried forward. So Commissioners, I'm asking you to walk with me. Let's do what's right, and let's move this forward in this category. Perhaps the city will get religion, have a meeting with God, and wanna do the same thing. By the least, the less, and those who are unable in many cases to fend for themselves. That's my motion.
Mr. 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 Chairman, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna recognize the county administrator, and I'm gonna come back to ask you a question. Mr. Administrator?
Just a brief technical clarification. Um, the issues that, that Commissioner Proctor brought up were certainly, uh, true at one time. Uh, and those, those agencies now who didn't fit in in the early on C H P, they're, they're all contemplated in our current C H S P process. The agencies that remain here are not those one-off agencies. These are agencies that don't provide direct services. That's why they're here. They're not eligible for C H S P funding only because they don't provide direct service. Just a, just a technical clarification.
Mr. 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 Chairman, what I'm, what the specificity that I'm gonna ask you for, I'm gonna come to you for a second.
I just got a clarification.
Clarification of this motion. Um, the administrator and our attorney had just said that, that, um, if we're gonna increase, there will need to be a specificity in where the increase goes. And so if you're gonna go to one point eight, what I ask is that you specify between C H S P and outside agencies, where would you like for that increase to go?
Ms. Chairman, uh, Ms. Vice Chairman, I, um, uh, off the top, I just penciled in my notes, looking at this over the weekend, that King Celebration, I'm, I'm in the, uh, special event funding category, asking for fifteen hundred more dollars for what they tried to do.
Fifteen hundred?
For the Soul Santa event, uh, I'm asking for, from the total of four thousand dollars, uh, that, that will put five thousand, ten thousand dollars for that category. So that's a six thousand dollar climb.
Okay.
Um, how much is six thousand and?
Seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five. So I'm asking for seventy-five hundred dollars. You think that's gonna take food off the county's table?
So, so you don't need one point eight million to get seventy-five hundred?
That's what you said at one point. I thought you counted all that.
I did, because I was actually, I was actually including the Commissioner of the Status of Women and Girls. Commissioner Dozier?
Hold on. I'm not finished.
Madam Attorney?
Just a point of information. I'm just trying to get clarification, uh, Chairman, on your substitute motion. So for the C H P funding level, it's currently at one point four-four-five-zero-zero-zero. Are you proposing to increase that?
No, ma'am. What, what, what the chairman has said is that he's not proposing to increase any of that. What he said is that he would like fifteen hundred dollars for, for Martin Luther...
Under option two?
Under option two, and six thousand for Soul Santa under option two.
I'm asking for ten thousand.
Uh, ten thousand more?
No, I'm asking for... You got four thousand. I'm asking for six more thousand.
Right. So that's six thousand and fifteen hundred, and they equal a total of seventy-five hundred increase for just those two events? Is there anything else that you're asking for an increase, Commissioner Proctor?
Um, Chairman, come back to me. You got anybody else in queue?
There's a motion pending on the floor without a second.
Uh, but motion does require a second.
We're trying to get clarification on it, that's all.
Yeah.
I'll second it for purposes of discussion. I will.
Thank you.
Substitute motion is seconded for purpose of discussion to fund at one point eight million.
You know, Commissioner...
But, 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 hold on. Hold on. Give me a second. What I need before I, before you second, what I need is specificity on where that, where that increase is going, or else... that increase is going, or else, I'm going, I guess I can decide.
No, Dozier put a motion down to respond to some information, some data, and something specific for the, for the women and girls, that was a blank check, we didn't know where that was going, and I still don't know what specificity is going to occur with that, so...
That was for, that's for a whole, like, for clarity, that's for a whole nother, so what she did was, she asked for approval of the maximum level that she, that we are at, and what she did on top of that was ask for the agenda item to come back, where we would look at that, and what, what, what would happen is, it would not come out discretionary, it would have to come out of either general fund, or it would have to come out of our contingency current year, so it's not going to come out of there. And so what would happen is, in the next budget, it would be contemplated in discretionary if we so please, but in this upcoming budget, it would not, it would, it would come out of a separate pot. So Commissioner Dozier's motion is to keep discretionary as is right now, not to increase at all.
Okay, I'm, I'm not sure with all of what you just said, and what I just told y'all is what I want.
All right, so if I can help you, if I can help you get to where you're trying to...
I'm talking about $7,500, I'm about to get a little frustrated with y'all.
If I can help you get to where you're trying to...
Dozier, I want $7,500, that's what I'm telling you.
Commissioner Proctor, give me a second, if I can help you get to where you're trying to get to, you don't need an increase of 1.8 to get to $7,500.
I was following you, Ms. Administrator.
What you need is, is you need to ask Commissioner Dozier, would she consider increasing those two items specifically, $1,500 and $6,000, to increase the total of discretionary by $7,500 as an amendment to your motion. Commissioner Dozier, for the third time, I'm going to ask you again, Commissioner Proctor is asking whether you could amend your motion to include that $7,500 for those two events.
This is why people just raise their eyebrows at me, because really, I'm making an argument against Santa and presents for children.
You sure are.
I mean, my goodness, that is a hard thing to do, I get it, you're putting us in a very hard position from my perspective, Mr. Chair, but this is the problem, if we were going to just arbitrarily increase these line items, well, my goodness, every single organization on this list could use additional money, and Soul Santa absolutely could have come, I would love to see information if we need to increase the money, but plucking a number out of the air doesn't work for me, we're opening Pandora's Box. So absolutely, Soul Santa wants to bring us something, they want an additional $5,000, $6,000?
Let's bring everybody up here, bring every, everybody on the list.
Can I, can I get some orders?
We don't need to bring Santa Claus to sit down, if we take children to see, go see Santa Claus.
Commissioner Proctor, can I get some orders of peace?
We've been here a long time.
We have additional 25...
What's that got to do with it?
Can I get some?
I don't care how long we been here, children still need the money.
Commissioner Proctor.
What do you mean, a long time got to do, we can't give children's money?
Mr. Chairman, technically this is your meeting, listen, what I'm asking here is, Commissioner Dozier, you have a point in what you're saying, Commissioner Proctor, you have a point as well?
Great point.
What I'm saying is, is that what, what, what you're missing, Commissioner Proctor, is, is that there's still another $25,000 that's unallocated in sponsorships. Mr. Administrator, if Soul Santa, Martin Luther King, or anything else that we have, we, we are funding at a specific level comes back to us and say they need extra funding, could they be funded out of the $25,000 that's for events that we have for the county? Could we increase based off of that money? The $25,000 is there, is for county sponsorships.
Those are, those are two separate line items, no, that, that...
They could not.
Yeah, no, that, those are two separate line items, yeah.
All right, so, so here's where we are, Commissioner Dozier, I completely understand where you're coming from, Commissioner Proctor, she says no, she said no. If you want, if you want to add, if you want to add an amendment, Commissioner, Commissioner Cummings, what I would recommend is that you wait for him to figure out what the $7,500 is, if you want to add an amendment, if you want the substitute motion, Commissioner Proctor, to get you where you're trying to go, I would recommend the substitute motion be that we increase the, those two line items, which in, which would be $7,500 to the bottom line of our discretionary funding, and that, and that we also bring back that, that agenda item that Commissioner Proctor, Commissioner... I cannot get those two confused, Commissioner Dozier has asked for, in her item, to come back as well, that would be the substitute I think you're trying to get to, not for 1.8, but just simply that we would increase those two line items by $7,500.
You know, Ms. Vice Chair, that sounds good, that's my substitute motion, and you know, sometimes it seemed like you got to raise $2 million just for me to get $7,500. Hell, I'm trying to get $7,500, and we got to go to 1.9, it's shaking a little bit loose for me.
Is there a second?
Dozier don't want to...
Is there a second to the substitute motion?
I think Commissioner Cummings already done that before.
Is there a second?
I think I second it, but...
There is a second for the substitute motion, so the substitute motion on the floor is that, is for that of additional $7,500, with $1,500 going to MLK event, $6,000 going to Soul Santa, as well as an agenda item coming back that Commissioner Dozier has described.
No, 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 $10,000 going to Soul Santa.
As an additional $6,000, $10,000 total.
It's already four there.
Yeah.
And then additional $1,500 for MLK, which would be?
$6,000.
$6,000 total, so $6,000 for MLK, $10,000 for Soul Santa, would be an increase of $7,500, does anybody understand? Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Now, in looking at the, the special events, and the chairperson had indicated some other line items as well, are those, are you abandoning those he mentioned, $5,000 Springfield, $5,000?
All of those are staying the same, the only two he has asked to increase was Soul Santa to $6,000, I'm sorry, Soul Santa to $10,000?
All those are what, they're separate?
All those are staying the same.
Oh, oh, the same?
Yeah, only thing he's asked to increase is 15, is $6,000 for MLK, and $10,000 for Soul Santa, that's the only thing he's asked to...
Oh, I see.
Yes, ma'am.
Those haven't changed.
Yes, ma'am, everything else stays the same.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I will say, I want to reiterate, that the biggest funding item under the outside services contract is $222,000 of Disc Village, I respect Disc Village, but I don't understand how 26% of the population gets almost 50% of the civil citation, I need some help understanding that.
Yes, that was a separate issue, thank you for that, thank you for that comment, though. Commissioner Myers, do you have a comment?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vice, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I, I, these two increases, I think are warranted, I mean, every nonprofit on this list could use additional money. But I have an issue, and I have a question for the county attorney, both of these events, both Soul Santa and MLK Foundation, is that correct, MLK Foundation?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Both these events are managed by an individual who I have actually hired on my campaign. So if these two organizations are the only two that we are explicitly increasing, and both of them are run by some, a good friend of mine, he's terrific, but they're run by one person who's on my campaign, I don't think I can vote for this. And so my question to the county attorney is, I mean, am I conflicted on this? It seems like I am. Even if I, even if I were to vote for it, I don't think I could based on this relationship, and for us as a board to single out two events run by one person for increases above what the norms have been, it seems a little, a little odd to me. Now, my, my, my potential conflict is, is another layer of that, but it's, it's an issue.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, does he have a conflict?
Do you have a contractual relationship with this individual?
It's not written, but it's implied, it's certainly verbal.
I would, I would recuse for the perception of a conflict if you're voting on an increase for the agenda items for events that are handled by this individual who works on your campaign.
On point, what if, what if, I'm sorry, on point, what if he was voting to keep the same funding levels? Is there not still a conflict, a perception?
No.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Myers?
But it's under that same statute 286.012, right?
Correct.
Okay, so your recommendation would be for me to, to recuse myself?
Since you've disclosed that relationship, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
May I follow?
I just think it, I'm sorry, ma'am, it's, both those events, I, I think are terrific events, I, I, I think the, the increase in the funding is warranted, it would go to good use, I just think it seems a little odd that those two events managed by one person are being singled out today, that's it, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
All right, I have, actually, I have Commissioner Cummings, and then I want to...
Yeah, I just have a follow-up question as far as Commissioner Myers' comment about run, these events run by the same, my question is, if these events are entities, do you know if they're corporations or entities, or what, would that make a difference? Do you know if they're entities or just individual? You don't know?
Commissioner Cummings, I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings, I believe the MLK Foundation is a 501(c)(3), I'm not sure what type of legal organization Soul Santa is.
So, so my question is, would that make a difference, Madam County Attorney, if they're entities, 501(c)(3)?
If there's a contractual relationship, it doesn't matter the corporate structure of the entity, or whether it's with an individual?
Oh, I thought he said he didn't have a contractual relationship.
No, I do, I have a verbal contract.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, okay. And then, and then my other question before we, before we get to the vote, and I recognize that the motion says bring an item back or leave it open as for, as Oasis, the Oasis set up in that, in that funding level, but, you know, what about the other, the groups that are outside of the CHSP process? You know, I know that all of the nonprofits, all of the groups could use additional money, budgets are tight right now, so if we go with the recommendation, and I know we got a motion on the floor about a cap, and then look at all of the, the agencies that provide, that fall outside of the CHSP process, is that something workable? Is that a, a medium that we could look at? I know Leslie Powell is here with Legal Services in North Florida, I know they could use more money, they, they have attorneys that do a whole lot of work, work a whole lot of hours, and I know if we are looking at increasing budgets, can we look at it from a holistic standpoint? Is that a happy medium we can look at, or is our deadline tonight, Mr. County Administrator, as far as setting a cap on our funding level?
Madam, Madam, Commissioner at large, as, as, as Ms. Oddie was giggling in the back of the room while I was getting a little, but, once we said that cap is set, traditionally what you, what you have seen up here is that people don't technically really come to us and ask us for an increase, every now and then what you'll see is, you'll see CPA, UPHS or, or other organizations say, increase the overall cap of CHSP. Or, we had a big, deep dive on organizations, what, how many years ago, Commissioner Dozier, when we looked at every single line item and started talking about them, I think it was like five, six years ago? Yeah, we had, about five, six years ago, we took all these line items, and we looked at them, and we cut down some to put them under specific areas, and then these were the ones that we actually ended up, ended up keeping, right? Traditionally, we don't really increase them unless they've come and requested, for the line item, requested an increase. What you've seen here today is exactly what happens, Oasis has come to us and said that they, they want us to contemplate an increase for their organization in the line item, okay? Because they've come and asked, we're entertaining that option, right? Nobody else here has come and asked, okay? We don't just arbitrarily say, okay, we're going to increase St. Francis Wildlife by $20,000 because we think they need it, if they come to us and ask us, then we may contemplate it at that point, but we don't just increase for the sake of increasing. Now, on the event items, it traditionally has worked the same way, in that, you know, if somebody wants to increase in their event item, they, they traditionally come and ask us. Commissioner Proctor has asked for an increase in those two specific events. I think the reason that you seconded, and the reason I'm even contemplating supporting it, is because I know for sure that there's more of an, and that Soul Santa piece of it, more money equals more kids get more gifts. I don't think any of that money is going necessarily to, to administer a program as much as it is, that money is going to buy gifts for those kids. As far as $1,500 for the MLK event, I think, again, as to the event, it's not going into the pockets of someone else, and so that's why I'm even considering it, but traditionally what we've had is, we've had people, just like in the other piece of it, come to us and say, hey, would you mind increasing whatever by this much? We're making that request, and then we consider it, and then we set the maximum, okay? Once we set that maximum, we can't go above the maximum. What Commissioner Dozier's motion does is, it sets the maximum at 1.6, and then we have an agenda item come back, it looks at the Oasis piece, and then that piece will, will come out of general fund, or it will either come out of our contingency for this year, and then the following year will, will, will place in consideration for, for discretionary if it goes that way, okay? What I had spoke of was, what I had spoke of was, is go ahead and increasing by a certain amount for consideration of the Oasis piece, knowing that it could or could not pass, but I kind of like the way Commissioner Dozier has said it. Now, what Commissioner Proctor has said, is, is substitute motioning, is for two specific items that would be increased to $10,000 and $6,000, which would be a total of $7,500 increase in two discretionary funding. So the process has been where people will come and ask for that request versus us actually throwing that request in ourselves and asking based off of what we know of organizations. Does that answer your question a little?
It, it, it does, it does, I just want to be clear on what I'm voting for, so I think I understand it now.
Yes, ma'am.
Those two entities.
Yes, ma'am, Mr. Administrator?
Yeah.
I was just trying to provide a little more clarification on something that I heard Commissioner Cummings say, and certainly, again, tonight is where you set your maximum within these categories, and you just had a, a, a robust conversation about the maximum levels for your maximum discretionary funding levels for special events, for example, perfectly fine, whatever the board decides there, that, that will be the amount set for that. Were these outside agencies, Commissioner Cummings, or Cummings are a little different? When you say, well, things cost more money and that, all of that sort of thing, these are also a little different agencies, and for the most part, they're providing a service to the county. So, for example, St. Francis Wildlife is a service to the county, so when we bring you these recommendations, it's for what that service costs. And, and, and so again, that's, that sets these apart a little bit, now there's a couple of exceptions, but for the most part, these are agencies that we're contracting with and but for that, we might have to do it ourselves, so we would, we would go pick up the, the injured animals, and we would go do those things, and so it's, it's really aligned with what those contractual services cost for us, and so we bring you these based on that, and so that's another reason why these are, same with Disc Village, same with Appalachian Regional Planning Council, and that's why we bring these to you with a specific dollar amount.
And these entities, I'm sorry, are specifically not eligible to go through the CHSP?
Correct, because they're not providing direct services.
Okay, because of that.
All right, look, we're going to get to the end of this item in a minute, so if you got to speak, speak now, I'm not reckoning by, anybody recognizing anybody else, I'm not making a comment after this piece right here. So I have Commissioner Dozier, I have Commissioner Proctor, I'm sorry, Chairman Proctor, would anybody else like to speak? The only caveat that I will make is, even, Mr. Administrator, even in the numbers that we approved today for each item, it is a maximum for that item, it does not set the budget at that item, is that correct, for the outside agency?
It, it is the maximum and can be reduced only.
Right, so if we, even if we set it at 10, set, set, Soul Santa at 10, came back and thought that we need to be at 4, we can do that, correct?
The board can reduce it, but not increase it, yes.
Right, Commissioner Dozier, followed by Chairman Proctor, Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I will be quick. We've been talking about a few thousand dollars for a very long time here, and it's gotten heated. I have never called the question, I never will call the question, I'm just going to put that out there, because I think these debates are important, but we have been here a very long time today, and this conversation, I think, is more about the policy and the ordinance, and the history that's gone into really getting this in the right posture, because when it was a free-for-all, meaning, and I don't mean that in a bad way, but organizations just came to the board, and this is going back 20, 25 years, it got really complicated. So over the years, we've streamlined this to make it as fair as possible because the needs are so incredibly great. If the substitute motion were to fail, I would be willing to add into my original motion, bringing back an agenda item on Soul Santa, the same way that I'm suggesting we do on Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. I don't mind looking at that, I would love to vote for kids and gifts and Santa, I absolutely would, but the process, the fairness matters. Legal Services in North Florida went through, and again, I keep picking on you, Leslie, but you're here and you're on the list, but worked for a while to really work with the staff and with us to get into this process, I'm just saying, we... I'm just saying, we open Pandora's box if we start doing this. So I just wanted to add that last comment, Mr. Vice Chair. If the substitute motion fails, we do have an alternative path, like we're contemplating with CSWG, to bring back an agenda item later, to look at the facts, to look at the details, and we don't jeopardize our process.
That's rather nice.
And the fairness. So I'll leave it there and see what happens.
What I would ask you to do, that's rather nice of you. What I would ask you to do, because I do have some questions there, is would you amend your motion to include an agenda item to come back looking at increasing the funding for MLK to $6,000?
Forgive me.
To $6,000?
I would do both.
And Soul Santa to $10,000?
Yes.
With their respective requests coming back with budgeted, what their budget increases would look like, what the money was to be spent on the other things. My question I have is, we do give them the extra money. I'm speculating that they would spend the money on those things, which I know they would, but it always, it is kind of always safe to say, okay, we've gotten a budget, this is what they said they're going to spend it on, this is what our increase is going to, and I feel better about going out to the public in general and say, yeah, I gave that $7,500 increase, and this is exactly what they're spending on.
Yes.
So either way, you get there both ways, where you try to go to Commissioner Proctor, but I think Commissioner Dozier's way gives us a way by which they submit budgets and we're able to see what that increase would be spent on and take a little time to be responsible about the increase that we're talking about. So if you would accept that as an amendment?
I can't accept it as an amendment while there's a substitute.
Point of order, the substitute motion is now on the floor. It was the motion in a second.
Exactly.
You have to vote it up or down, or it has to be withdrawn.
All right, thank you.
Right. So Madam County Attorney, I was okay saying I would do that if the substitute motion failed. That's why I didn't amend it at that point, but I wanted to let you all know, if the substitute motion fails or is withdrawn, I will amend my motion as we just discussed.
Thank you for correcting me, Madam Attorney. Commissioner Proctor, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I was told that I had to come up and cite some numbers on the spot right here tonight. I did that. I was not told in the form of what Commissioner Dozier just laid out and what you just spelled out, to bring an agenda item back, an agenda item, la, la, la. I heard our staff said we had to decide and set a limit right now because we had to do it by March 31st. So I pursued the instructions that were shared with me. I'm willing to withdraw if you know what I want. I'm willing to withdraw my substitute motion. Commissioner Dozier?
All right, stop right there. Stop right there.
But I ain't finished talking.
No, I'm going back to you. All right. Commissioner Dozier, what Commissioner Proctor has said, will you accept an amendment based on his withdrawal? Can I do it this way? Commissioner Proctor said he will withdraw if you accept the amendment that I explained. Will you accept the amendment if he withdraws?
Pretty please, and then can we vote?
All right. Commissioner Proctor, will you withdraw your motion and get an amendment?
Yeah, but I need to say something tonight beyond that.
Can you answer that question just for, for, for? Will you withdraw?
Yeah, yeah, I withdraw.
Ask for the amendment, okay?
Yeah, I'm going to go along that process. But I was told that I had to make my mind up tonight and give y'all some numbers. That's what I did.
All right. Give me a second. So the motion on the floor right now is Commissioner Dozier's motion, all right, for staff recommendation at 1.6 with the added, I have two added agenda items. The first one being for the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, the second one being on a $7,500 increase to those, $1,500 going to, increase going to MLK, $6,000 going to Soul Santa to be brought back, those two agenda items to be brought back. That is the motion on the floor. Thank you so much for your acceptance of the amendment. Commissioner Proctor, finish your comments, and then we'll go to a vote.
You know, in the perceptions of culture, I'm not sure if this is a learning moment or not. But I heard my staff tonight say that it was do or die, put some numbers up. Attempted to do just that. And what I saw tonight and what I felt tonight was Kelly Dozier, I'm sorry, Kelly Oddie, come forward and say, this, this, and that. Commissioner Dozier is like, oh, yeah, 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 and makes a motion to bring back an item for that. I came and made a comment about it's tough times on all these folk, and Commissioner Dozier said there is no room in the end for her motion, as I asked her on the front end. And she said, no, no, no way, Jose. So as an elected person, as a county commissioner, it frustrates me that Kelly Oddie can come here and a motion can be made to accommodate her request, her ask. A sitting commissioner elected makes a suggestion, and there's no accommodation room in here to stretch to put this in. It seems like white privilege, and I don't have that. That is a feeling that occurs when a commissioner elected is shut down and his voice is not accommodated at all. And when I look at this list, its totality, the three little black organizations are the leastest, the leste's, and teeny weeny, $4,000, $1,000, and $1,000, $4,000, and $4,500. And compare it to all this other major money, of which we all have some conflict somehow to other, Mr. Minor, but we have conflicts over $1,000, over $4,000, whatever. So you need to know that sometimes how I see and what I felt, and I apologize if I misfelt and if I missaw something. But I saw white privilege walk up there and get accommodated, and me was not accommodated. And the least, the last place money here is just meager to all this other money we doling out. These children need it, and I'm appreciative, Commissioner Dozier, that you heard and accepted my pretty please and please pretty. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I don't want to get into back and forth, I really don't, but I can't, I can't not speak on behalf of the process here. I think what you saw was a bit of a difference in the way things came. And you kind of spoke on it. We were responding to Ms. Oddie's request with Commissioner Dozier's motion for an agenda item. What I think of Commissioner Dozier is that if the facilitators of Soul Santa and MLK had come and made a similar request or comment, that she likely, and I think he would, would have asked for the agenda item to come back just the way she did for the Oasis Center. I don't think it was necessarily a thing of race as it was when she said it was a thing of more process. And so I think this is a great example of when you don't have, when you have sunshine and you can't talk to a commissioner about what you're thinking, this is a great example of the sausage being made right in front of the public eye. And so what we got to was the place that we needed to get to, where what you were asked for, what you asked for was accommodated in a way that respects the process-mindedness of Commissioner Dozier, and it really pays respect to the process that we have in place in general. It doesn't open us up to, you know, chaos when it comes to everybody coming and asking, even with myself, when I said the 1.8. Now that I think about it, you're right, Commissioner Dozier, you have everybody, your mama, coming here asking, when you got an extra $150, what are you going to use it for? So this kind, this way does give us the ability to respect our process, have specific asks. It still work within the framework of our budget, and we keep rolling forward. And so I didn't want the moment to pass by where you had the thought that it was a black thing against you, or it was a thing against you as much as it was the process, and trying to find a ticker with a way, tinker with a way to be able to respect the process but get done what you were trying to get done. Mr. Administrator, I'm going to hear you out, and I'm going straight to a vote.
It's very, very quickly. Just, again, just to further clarify, and the reason that we responded the way we did to Commissioner Proctor, obviously, in the moment, related to this, and this being the last time to set the maximum, which is true, it's true for Commissioner Proctor and everybody on this dais, because that's the board's ordinance. But what Commissioner Dozier asked for was something very different than that. It was for an agenda item to come forward which contemplates budget out of the current year, not the future year. This ordinance speaks to the future year, the FY '23 budget and setting the budget. The agenda item coming back would be in the current year out of current funding, which doesn't have that same stipulation on it. So that's the distinction, and I just wanted to make sure it was very clear in everyone's mind that, yes, this maximum discretionary time for FY 2023, that's the board's ordinance for everyone and for these matters, that the board needs to set that maximum discretionary level tonight or before March 31st. But for agenda items coming back in the current year, for current year funding, that's the discretion of the board. You understood that?
I did. I did. And, God, I hate to do this, but I have a question. Mr. Administrator, if the two items that are presented here for event funding is approved in current year, could it be used for next year's funding? Because both of those events would take, they gone. All right. We have a motion on the floor for option one, which is increase, I'm sorry, increase, for us to maintain current discretionary funding with two agenda items coming back, one for the Commission on Status of Girls, Women and Girls, the other commission, the other item to be the increase to $6,000 for MLK, increase to $10,000 for Soul Santa. I'm sorry, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, one through five. For options one through five with staff recommendation, with two agenda items coming back, first agenda item being with, on the commission, on the, on the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, second item being a look at increasing MLK to $6,000 and increasing Soul Santa. Soul Santa to $10,000. Is there any objection to the motion on the floor? Yes, I'm sorry, we're recusing, we're the recusal from Commissioner Minor.
Yes, let me make my announcement. For reasons which have been previously stated, I must recuse myself from this new motion based on 286.012 Florida statutes. Thank you.
Under normal circumstances, I would ask us to split the motions, but on this, you're going to have to recuse from both because I don't want to confuse anything any more than they already are. Any objection on the item? Saying no, we show it as passed, 5-0 with Commissioner Jackson out of chambers and Commissioner Minor recusing. Is there any more items for us to consider, Mr. Administrator?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We'll move now to citizens to be heard on agenda items. Do we have any citizens to be heard on agenda items?
We have two speakers.
First speaker?
Mr. Chairman, Donna Conorel, to be followed by Dr. Jerry C.
I'll tell you what, we'll take Dr. C first and then Conorel next. Yes, ma'am. Dr. C, name and address for the record, please, ma'am. You have three minutes.
Thank you for this opportunity, and I wanted to come back to the Lake Hall School issue that we've been talking about. You said you tabled it, and I'm not quite sure how long it's going to be on the table, so I want to make sure that you see it again. Here's the Lake Hall School State Park. This is an image put together by one of the students at the School of Architecture at Florida A&amp;M University. Here then, in the red, is where the school is located. You can see it's attached to that house there. To the right is a house that is for sale now. You see that it has a very clear access to the school. When you look down south from the house, you'll see two vacant lots, and then you'll see the corner where Lake Hall and Thomasville Road come together. Now, that corner where Lake Hall and Thomasville Road comes together, that property is all for sale. The two vacant lots north of that corner are indeed that, they're vacant pristine lots. There is someone in that next house, but again, that top house, right there where it says 319, that house is for sale. Here then, it's satellite view of the same thing, so you can get a feel for what I'm talking about. You'll see the corner here, you'll see those two pristine lots filled with trees and et cetera. And then you'll see the, again, that little corner triangular peninsula thing, that's where the Lake Hall School is located. Inaccessible, as you can see. Here then, I asked the student to put together something that would make people turn around, make a U-turn, and come back to this park. There's no left turn onto Lake Hall School from Thomasville Road North. So he did put this together for me. This then is the corner lot. It contains all the code requirements. There's bathrooms, there's curbs, there's sidewalks, there's even a little picnic area, as you can see, and a little shade and performance space and et cetera. Very well conceived for the corner lot. Now, we want to leave that corner lot and all of the codes behind, and we want to go into that pristine area, and that's where that gateway is. I asked him to give me something that was inviting and something that looked like an adventure. And you go into the forested part of this park, walking, biking, other kinds of activities, and kind of a step back in time as well. Here then is the road to the school. This is the old Thomasville Road. It's borderline, and as you can see, here is the school, and that's how people get to it. This then is the view from the house. You can see the school a little bit, kind of hard, but it's there. And this was the school last week when I met Commissioner Minor. You're looking at extension cords, all kinds of overgrowth, and lastly, we're saying, if hope were a place, it would be the school. I'm asking to find out when I can get back on the agenda and when I can begin to talk to you about more specific ways that you can help. This is not about money. This is about gaining access. After the last meeting, we did put in a contract for the property because they said they were selling it, but within three weeks, that did not work because they wouldn't do the boundary settlement. So the title has problems, right? So we withdrew that contract. What we need is a school. I don't need the people's homes who own that property. We just need the school. We're asking for a cutout for that eminent domain piece, but I do need some closure on it because I can't get to any grants or any other thing without somebody having the property. And they do not want to do a boundary settlement without money, lots of money.
Mr. Administrator, two questions. First question is, when is the item coming back? Second question is, contemplation, one of the options being the item, contemplation for a eminent domain piece to it. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The item was tabled, so it would come back upon board's direction. And the issue, and I was listening to Dr. C carefully, it sounds like the issue is the same with where we left it last time in terms of your consideration with whether you want to exercise the power of eminent domain to take this property. And so, again, it was tabled, so it would, whatever, it would take the board, a motion from the board to give us a direction to bring it back, if that's what the board so chose.
Commissioner Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will reiterate my support for doing whatever is in our power to isolate this schoolhouse so that we can then facilitate creating public access. We acknowledge all the same problems still exist from when we talked about this last month. It's going to take, I think, at this point, the will of this board to just put our foot down and say, we're going to do whatever it takes to save this property. I know there are challenges. We have acknowledged the challenges. There is no clear solution at this point. The sellers on either side are asking for money. They are not willing to just give it over. There's nothing we can do about that. So we are limited by what we can do. It's going to take the will of this board deciding that we are going to save this historic treasure. And if we can't do that, it's going to languish.
Mr. Welch, what I'm looking for, I think Dr. C is looking for, is I hear what you're saying, county administrator set this table, it will come back and we request. Are you, are you willing to make the motion for it to come back at the next meeting or the main meeting with a contemplation of everything else we've talked about and as well as eminent domain by us? Is that, is that your wish for an agenda item to come back then, or?
I am glad to ask for an agenda item to come back to include those options, but I feel like that's the same agenda item we had more or less a month ago.
Is that correct?
So...
All right, so give me... All right, so give me date certain. Would you like for it to come back at our next meeting or the May meeting?
I would like the agenda item to come back as soon as possible for staff to actually propose real options for eminent domain. And/or accessing grant funds and/or getting the state involved and/or real, like, like, more than just a status report, but like an actual solution report.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Welch that the Lake Hall School agenda item come back April 12th with the, with the options that were given, with the update as to where we are as far as any progress being made, been made since our last meeting when the, when the agenda item was on the, on the agenda. Is there a second? Commissioner Cummings, second that. Is there any more comment? Yes, sir, I have Commissioner Cummings, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, I just wanted to just reiterate my support for us doing something, making some movement one, one way, one way or the other. And I appreciate Dr. C coming back to us in, in reference to it. I think we need to do everything we can for the preservation of that property, of the Lake Hall School. And I think that if it's brought back as an agenda item with some, with some options, including the pros and cons of eminent domain, and if, I understand, Dr. C, tonight, you said access was not an issue anymore? Or did I misunderstand?
With some of the solutions that we're talking about, with the, the map and the access from the house and that kind of thing, is that what?
Well, well, at the la, if I may.
Yes.
At the last meeting, I had asked a question about if the property was purchased, would it still require some eminent domain action for access to the Lake Hall School? And I think the county administrator said yes. So I thought I heard you tonight, when you showed the roads, you said, well, access is no longer an issue. Did I misunderstand that?
You're correct. If we had, if we do eminent domain just to the school, we can have access as long as we're looking at those other parcels. In other words, if we're making a state park, we would start at that corner and proceed back toward the school.
So, so what I understand, Commissioner Cummings, from the conversations I've had with Dr. C, and I'm sure Commissioner Welch could probably update you on it, but there's contemplation there, there's a contemplation of a state park and trail that would start at the corner there, that would not, that would alleviate the access piece of it. The trail would go from Clay Gardens all the way and it would end at Lake Hall School. The state has sent support, a letter of support saying that they would really like for us to really look at that, that's something they would be interested in.
Look at the purchase of that property.
Right, but the thing is, is nothing can really move until the property moves. And so that's the holdup there, even the grant piece of it. What Dr. C has said is that she can write grants, but she can't do anything. They're not going to give anything because she doesn't own the property. So, so, so acquiring the property is a key piece in, in that trail piece being a part of it.
Can I have one more follow-up question? Uh, Dr. C also mentioned that at one point you did have a contract to purchase the property, and it failed through, so I take it as far as your grant funds, your organization, your entity has the funds to actually purchase the building, but we're looking at the surrounding property, or no?
No, we can't move forward with any kind of grant unless the property is already held by either a government agency or unless we have. You have to own the property before you can even apply for a grant.
Oh, okay, so the contract to purchase the property that was in hand was anticipation of governmental funds to purchase it?
That would have been a personal purchase.
Oh, a personal purchase.
Of the friends at Lake Hall School.
Which would ultimately be purchased by the county.
Correct.
Anticipating, okay, I understand. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor.
Um, Chairman, thank you so much, Ms. Vice Chair. Commissioners, I believe that in looking at this project, if this project costs more than $7,501 for this project, we certainly ought to find room for warm-bodied children who are the recipients of Christmas gifts. Uh, I'm requesting that we have a monetary amount attributed to the road purchase, the eminent domain cost, the restoration, what it takes to get this project to the levels of what Dr. C is suggesting. And then I've heard her say, ultimately, it's your desire that the county would take over and be the stewards over the property. Is that accurate?
That would be appropriate if they, if, if the county is willing to do that.
Very good. So then I'm asking for the cost of the continuation of our stewardship in keeping up and maintaining the property. So I think that all costs attendant with the steps to get it, to place it in our care and to sustain it once it's in our care ought be tabulated and presented to us.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor, Chairman Proctor. Mr. Administrator, to balance that out, if, in fact, it does become a piece of the trail of the state park, you also include in that what that cost would be as well, as far as maintenance and everything. Would it be in the situation where we purchase it, get the grants, whatever, and then be able to have it be maintained and all the structures and all that kind of stuff, even pieces of it reaffirmed by, by, by way of the state grant? Uh, or being a part of the state park? So just kind of give us all the information, I know it's a lot, but you guys have already started working on it, so.
If I could just mention that wherever Florida has quite a bit of money for this kind of thing.
I understand.
But again, property has to be held.
Yes, ma'am. Any other comment on this item? Most on the floor is that we bring back the Lake Hall agenda item at the April 12th meeting with all the information that has been requested by commissioners at the dais. Does everyone understand the motion on the floor? All those in favor, can I say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries without objection. Uh, next speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Donna Cottarelle. I live in the Bond neighborhood here in Leon County. And I'm grateful to hear that the motion has been passed to bring it up at the next commissioners' meeting because it, as Commissioner Welch said, it is deteriorating day by day. I just would like to emphasize that there's more than just a school here. Dr. C has paperwork from, I think like 20 years ago that shows not just the provenance of the school, but the provenance of that area after reconstruction. And I would ask that you not forget that the African-American Museum in Washington, D.C. was supported not just by the federal government, but by small donations by people like me who gave $10, $50. I mean, we are here in a state that has, I think it's three historically black colleges with several black sororities and fraternities, as well as other organizations that I can see pouring into not just the building, but the history of education, education for freed, formerly enslaved people and the history of that, that area that was historically black. My mom said when she was growing up, that whole area was all black farmers. And I have sent pictures of my aunt, who's still alive, and her cousin was interviewed by Dr. C. We have folks still alive who attended that school, who could contribute oral histories that would make that building come alive. So I hope that the county will go forward, whether it's with the state or with the city, or like I said, small contributions from folks like me to make this history come alive for all of us. So thank you for considering it.
Thank you, ma'am. Any more speakers on, on non-agenda items, Mr. Administrator?
Uh, no, sir.
Mr. Chair, I hand it back to you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You've been a great vice chairman. I appreciate the breather. Commissioners, we've come now to the end of our meeting, thereabout, and I want to commend this great commission, this robust body. And we've done what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to gnaw on that bone, get down to the gristle and engage and have a great time. And we've come, we've heard, we've shared, we've had a great time. Madam County Attorney, you have any matters to bring to this body tonight?
No, sir.
Great. Administrator, you have any matter, matters to bring before?
Not a chance, Mr. Chairman.
Good. Mr. Commissioner Minor, do you have any matters to bring before this body tonight?
You're talking to me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. I'd like to request a proclamation recognizing April 28th, 2022 as a day of remembrance in memory of the victims of the Holocaust and in honor of the survivors as well as the rescuers and liberators. Also that citizens of Leon County should work to promote human dignity and confront hate whenever and wherever occurs. Uh, I'll make that motion. Okay, and Commissioner Maddox had a second, so.
All those in favor of the motion, can I say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries without objection.
And then finally, just, I know we've all seen and talked a lot about the war going on in Europe right now with Ukraine. Just wanted to ask everyone to pray for the folks over there. They're enduring a tremendous amount of hardship that I can't even imagine. It's going to be going that way for a while, so just wanted to express our sentiments to them. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Minor, you're good ideas and suggestions. Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, one quick follow-up. Ms. County Administrator, I'm content with just some information about the past discussion on the app, Trail Hassy. If you could just provide kind of an, an update on where we were, why the decision was made, that would be fine. Carrie, thank you for your additional comments during break. We don't need a motion for that, do we, sir?
No.
Okay, thank you. Two proclamation requests. The first to be presented tomorrow night at an outside event, obviously, tomorrow, recognizing March 6th through 12th as the Women in Construction Week. Forgive me, it has been a long night for all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's most on the floor for proclamation for Women in Construction Week. There's any objection to the motion on the floor? Show it as passed, Dan, please.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. The second one to be presented at our April 12th meet, a meeting in chambers, proclamation recognizing March as Multiple Scoriosis Awareness Month. Yes, of course, that will be April, but we only have one meeting this month, so we'll go ahead and do it in a little late.
There's motion on the floor for proclamation recognizing, I'll second it. Uh, MS, uh, MS?
Uh, yes, MS Awareness Month.
Yes. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, can I say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries without objection. Commissioner Dozier?
I'm going to go really fast because even though it's been a long time, I want to recognize the very last COVID update that we received from the county administrator last Friday. It's number 341. After 717 consecutive days of our emergency operations center being open, this is a remarkable effort. Um, you list in the weekly updates, which used to be daily, right? That you've had 2,060 conference calls with 28,000 participants and 36 million impressions on our social media and other advertisements. This is a Herculean effort that all of our staff, and that doesn't even touch COVID and ARPA and all of the programs that had to be created immediately to get assistance. So, Ms. County Administrator, to you, to your entire team in every department, including Blueprint, this, I just wanted to say thank you. This was really, that was significant, and I didn't want to let it pass, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, without acknowledging what we've been through the last two years. Almost to the day, our last in-person meeting in 2020 was March 12th. It was a blueprint meeting, so thank you, sir, very much. Um, and the last, last thing is I do appreciate all of your comments.
Sounds like a Baptist.
About. It's been a long day, Mr. Chair, you know? Um, and I know I've said that four times. Um, thank you for all your comments about the Trailblazers lunch. I truly do appreciate it. And Commissioner Cummings, he did a great job with the proclamation, and I appreciate that. Mary Ann Lindley and I, former Commissioner Lindley, were sitting at the table together reflecting on how we could almost memorize some of those segments because we had gone back and forth so many years. We give a lot of proclamations, but I, I thought about this one a little different this year because the proclamation I received from the school board 30 years ago this month, I gifted to Oasis. Um, and it's a proclamation recognizing Women's History Month in Leon County schools. And so we, we do that often, but they, they mean a tremendous amount to the people that we recognize and the issues that we recognize. So, um, I've kept a hold of that one for a long time. I'm glad it has a new home, and I just wanted to appreciate all of you. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say thanks to our Public Works staff, who seem to be the, the people I call the most to like fix potholes and pick up trash and trim trees. And they put a guard rail in front of Kalaran Lakes Preschool for me last week, and they're just really awesome. And so I just wanted to, you know, that's kind of my typical thing now. I just constantly think Public Works. So we got a great Public Works operation and they're awesome. So thank you all, and, you know, I'll see you at the springtime town ass parade.
Super. All right, Commissioner Cummings?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just very briefly, I was certainly honored today to present the proclamation from the city, from the county, recognizing this as, as Women's History Month. And again, want to congratulate Commissioner Dozier for being recognized as the Trailblazer of the Year. I want to just thank staff and clearly our county attorney for giving us our legal, our legal erection, always good advice. And it's a great meeting tonight. I believe we got a lot accomplished for the citizens here in Leon County, which is, which is our job to just move, move the clock forward. So thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, for, for conducting a great meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Thank you. I can't believe all you guys missed this, so I get the opportunity to do it. So just last week, we had, we are going to, due to successes, we're going to get the opportunity to celebrate a Heisman Trophy winner in another way. Florida High became the state 3A champion in basketball last week, being led by none other than the great Charlie Ward. Uh, what people don't remember, or they probably shouldn't remember because he played for so long, was he wasn't just a Heisman Trophy winner and a great football player, but he played in the NBA for a long time, had a great career there, and was one of the greats here at Florida State. And so what I want to ask for is a proclamation recognizing Florida High's basketball team for their championship, as well as recognizing Coach Charlie Ward for his contributions to our community. Uh, all those in motion, all those in favor of the motion, can I say aye? I wouldn't, I wouldn't dare ask if you oppose. Motion carries without objection. Thank you so much for that. Actually, I'm going to ask that. Uh, second proclamation, I had an opportunity to go to the Black Business Expo. Awesome event. I don't know if you had an opportunity to go out there, but it was our first one. I think they did an amazing job. Uh, I want to ask for, I don't think we did a proclamation. What I would like to ask for is a proclamation recognizing Vaughn Wilson and Ace, Mega Ace Media for the jobs they did at First Annual Black Expo, encourage them to continue on with, with exposing our community to our black, to the black businesses here, and look forward to the next Black Expo next year. So that's a proclamation I'm asking for on behalf of Mr. Wilson and his efforts for the Black Expo. Is there a second to that motion? Motion's been made and seconded. Any objection? I'm sorry, Commissioner Dozier?
You're making the motion, Mr. Vice Chair, and calling for the vote. I just want to make sure we're in the proper posture here.
He heard, he heard me snoring over here, that's all.
Yes, um, so, yeah, we're, just, just for the record and everything, that was.
Mr. Chairman, will you make that motion for me?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any objection? Show it as passed. Mr. Chair, will you make the last motion for me as well, just so we're in the right order? Motion's been made for FSU basketball proclamation, sorry. Seconded by Commissioner Cummings. Any objection? Show it as passed. Last, but not least, I, I, I want to make a comment. I know, I know it's getting late. We haven't been here this late in a long time, but I think this is necessary. Um, I had a conversation earlier with someone about just the way things should run. We have today on three or four different issues that we saw policy things that could be cleaned up. We brought those things forward. We asked for agenda items to clean them, clean them up. be cleaned up. We brought those things forward. We asked for agenda items to clean them up, and we'll most definitely clean those things up. I think when it comes to the role that we play as policymakers in the fiscal, the fiscal, not agents, but what's the word I'm looking for? Somebody help me out. Stewards of the money here in Leon County. Thank you. It's been a long night, as Commissioner Dozier said five times. We have a role to play. But I think Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner, see, it's been a long night. The county administrator and the county attorney has a role to play as well. What I respect about this board is that we stay in our lane. There's not many times, if any, that I can say that we as a board have tried to get into personnel issues that is, in fact, the county administrator, county attorney's place to be. We stick to what we're supposed to, which is policy and which is the fiscal piece of it. And when those things come up, the county administrator respects that that's our lane. He allows us to do our business. But when his stuff comes up, we respect his lane, allow him to do his business. That's why Leon County works so well. That's why we are the board we are. That's why we continue to roll. And I'm hopeful that this dais continues to stay that way because I think it's the secret to the sauce and the success of what is Leon County. I appreciate this board for being able to understand our roles. Even Commissioner Cummings and Commissioner Welch, you just got here, but you understand what you're supposed to be doing while you're here, and I appreciate that. Because it's very easy to jump out there and start doing things that really that you don't know that you're not supposed to do, but that is outside of what our responsibility as a board is. And on the flip side of that, I think the county administrator and the county attorney who are standing in their lanes, allowing us to do our business, but also letting us know when we need to, what's the correct way of doing our business when we're outside of it. For instance, when I just tried to make a motion and share the thing at the same time, and the county attorney gave me the evil eye, and Commissioner Dozier saw it before I did and asked me to correct myself. That's part of what we do up here. So I respect the way we work. I like the way we work. That's the reason I enjoy being on this board, and I look forward to us continuing to do the work that we do and the way that we do it. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
George. All right. Thank you, Ms. Vice Chairman. Great job. Along the line of thought that you were carrying, indeed, I heard someone say tonight that ours is the most educated community in the state of Florida. That backs that up. As such, we have, you know, you get a hot dog and nothing on it. It's pretty dry. But we bring to this, our meetings mustard and sauce and all kinds of flavor, and I enjoy that. We leave tonight a little more exhausted than typically, and that's good for us as policymakers. It's good to exercise and for the community to see the processes which we arrive at conclusions and spend this community's money. For the issues in the range of those that we carried forward tonight is atypical for one night, but it speaks to our capacity to think and to channel correctly along policy lines, along with the recommendations made by our staff. Excellent staff can only be better when they're challenged and pushed by a champion commission, and we are that. And as long as we have outstanding staff, they're the scaffolding with which we stand upon. And it's our right to push the envelope for the excellence we desire for our community. So thank you for your engagement tonight. Anybody's feelings are hurt. I know nobody's feelings are hurt. But that's what we do. We come to do what we do, and we've done that. Tonight, Commissioners, I want to ask your support for placing on our agenda this resolution, Universal Declaration of Human Rights Treaty. A young lady was here before from the Jewish organization. I can't remember the name. I met with her and Attorney Mark Slakman, and to talk about the Ukraine situation, Commissioner Minor. Communities all over the United States are making statements, showing solidarity. You all are wearing the blue. And in fact, let us note for persons at home tonight, several commissioners are wearing this button. I stand with Ukraine. I stand with Ukraine. And as we're standing with the Ukraine, we have a suggested item of our adopting and supporting the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. And I ask if you'd be willing to support us bringing this back as an agenda item for consideration for adopting this resolution. Motion. I make that motion. Make that motion, okay?
Commissioner Minor made the motion. I second it.
All those who have favored the motion indicate by saying aye? Any opposed? Motion carries without objection.
Right.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioners, we have a request for a proclamation for Bike Month, for May, on May 10th, a proclamation for Bike Month. So move.
Motion's been made and seconded. Motion made by Chairman, seconded by Commissioner Minor. Any objection? Show it as approved.
Commissioners, I make a request to attend the National Association of Black County Commissioners Conference, which will be April 20th through 24th in Memphis. And I make that motion for my attendance to go to the National Association of Black County Commissioners.
What's the event again? National?
National Association of Black County Commissioners.
Okay.
NACO. Move. So move.
Motion's been made, but Commissioner Proctor, I actually want to, I actually want to kind of broaden that. It's not on our approved, it's not on our approved travel, but there's more than one black commissioner up here. I think it's a conference of national what now?
The National Association of Black County Commissioners, which is a subset of the National Association of County Commissioners.
Right.
It exists under the umbrella of the National Association of NAACP.
What I would ask Commissioner Proctor is that you broaden it to give all of our commissioners the ability to do that, to make a...
Okay. Commissioners, I make the motion that we would include the National Association of Black County Commissioners as one of the standing events that either of us would not have to seek the permission of. Among those which already exist is the National Urban League, the National Congressional Black Caucus, and I'm not sure if the National NAACP. But I like your permission, support of placing the National Association of Black County Commissioners, of which I'm a member, as one of those standard things. We don't have to come back here over and over and over to ask.
Is there a second to that motion? Motion's been seconded. We're in good order, correct? Madam Attorney?
The chair passed the gavel so he can make the motion.
Yes. All those who have favored the motion indicate by saying aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. So that would be added to the calendar of events.
And then the final, the final, final. See, to request a presentation from our Big Ben Hospice organization to our board, the numbers of COVID deaths which have occurred over the last, I mean, dying is real, and there's been an extraordinary amount of that here in our community due to COVID. And I wanted to request the honor and presence of the Big Ben Hospice, as well as present them at that time with a proclamation honoring extraordinary work they've done in covering the multiple deaths that they've covered.
Motion's been made by our chairman. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Minor. Any objection? Show it as passed unanimously.
Okay, Mr. Vice Chairman, the elder care organization, and I know that not only is dying real, but hunger is real in our community. And I wanted also for elder care to give a presentation with respect to their outreach and whether or not we have senior citizens falling through the cracks, just to give us an overview of our elderly in coming out of COVID experiences, being isolated, special needs, no air conditioning, we're coming into summer, all of those things. I'd like to ask the board for a presentation from elder care and also recognize the work that they've done extraordinary during the times of COVID.
Mr. Administrator, do we need a motion for that presentation?
No, sir. We'll take that as a direction to have it on the next agenda as a presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Chairman, Commissioners, thank you all for your dignity, for your efforts, and let us consider... I feel gravity, Mr. Chairman. You feel the... Good night.